Good evening and welcome to the September 2nd, 2021, meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices and mute their microphones to avoid any technical interference with the meeting. Also, we will be using Zoom's Spanish interpretation services this evening. Please listen to the following announcement regarding interpretation services during tonight's meeting. Would you play the recording, please?
Interpreting Services, Servicios de Interpretación. Simultaneous interpretation is available in Spanish. La Interpretación Simultánea está disponible en español. On a computer at the bottom of the screen will be an interpretation globe. Click that globe and then select Spanish. En una computadora, en la parte baja de la pantalla habrá un globo de interpretación. Haga clic en ese globo y seleccione Spanish. On a mobile device at the bottom of the screen, tap the ellipses icon on the bottom right. Three dots. Tap Language Interpretation. Tap Spanish. En un dispositivo móvil, en la parte baja de la pantalla, toca el icono de elipses en la parte baja de la derecha. Dos tres puntos. Toque Language Interpretation. Toque Spanish. Thank you. Gracias.
Gracias. Thank you. This meeting is being recorded for those who cannot observe now, and information on how to view this and other meetings of the board will be posted on our board webpage. Now we will have prayer and pledge of allegiance by our vice chair, Sonia Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let us bow our heads. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Here.
Mrs. Ahmed.
Here.
Ms. Boozer Strather.
Here.
Mr. Burrows.
Here.
Mr. Serrano Ruiz.
Present.
Mr. Harris. Mrs. Mickens Murray.
Here.
Mr. Montero. Mr. Murray. Mrs. Queen.
Present.
Mr. Thomas.
Present.
Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Miller.
Present. Before we move on to the adoption of the agenda, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege per the request of Mr. Shelton, our parliamentarian. He indicated, he sent me a text message indicating he wanted to share with the board a certain quote or section of the parliamentarian contract.
It's the code of professional responsibility for myself as a member of the National Association of Parliament. I just wanted to see that I am required to keep information that I get given to me in confidence. I'm required to keep it in confidence.
Did you send it to all the board members?
I sent it to you and Ms. Berkeley and the vice chair.
Okay, Ms. Berkeley, would you see that all the board members get a copy of the document that he forwarded, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. With that, and I thank you, oh, and since I took a moment of personal privilege, I just wanted to thank Mr. Alvaro Serrano Ruiz on the, give him a compliment on the advisory council meeting that he held last week. Was it last week or this week? These days go by so fast. Anyway, that he held, and it was a wonderful turnout. The students were very excited, very ambitious, and we just have to compliment him and his leadership. You just came on board and I'm giving you a compliment, Mr. Ruiz. But thank you, and he's showing that he is ready for this position and for the leadership position. Again, thank you. Now, I will get back on to our agenda with the adoption of the agenda for today, today's work session. So may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the agenda for September 2nd, 2021. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? The motion carries, and the agenda is adopted. Now we'll move into 2.6, Approval of Board Meeting Minutes, August 12th and August 24th, Special Board Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the minutes for August 12th, 2020 Board Meeting and the August 24th, Special Board Meeting Minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Then the motion carries, and the minutes for August 12th and August 24th have been approved by this board. Now we will move into 3.0, The Public Comment on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items. Colleagues, we have several registered live public comment speakers this evening. I don't have a specific number because I wasn't given a final count before we came into the meeting. Therefore, I'm saying several. So with that, to the public, you have been registered to speak in a public forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The board will not address your comments. You must speak on the topic for which you have been registered. All registered speakers will have three minutes to provide comments. At the sound of the buzzer, speakers may complete that sentence only. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted, and you may be asked to leave the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names. For example, principal, deputy superintendent, CEO, etc. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. Our first registered speaker for tonight is Ms. Amity Pope, PG Changemakers Coalition. Ms. Pope.
I did not see Ms. Pope in the attendees pool, so I pulled over to the, I pulled the second speaker, Ms. Wingfield.
Ms. Tanya Wingfield, Individual General Administration. Ms. Wingfield.
Can you, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, board members, and good evening, Dr. Goldson. My comments will be brief. So as we begin this new school year, my hope is that the public will see a different tone with school board meetings. Many of us would like to hear more from the CEO and her staff on the academic program and services outlined in the strategic plan. We would like to hear more conversations around any proposed spending tied to those programs and services and reporting to the Board of the successes, lessons learned, and actions for improvement. We encourage board members to execute your oversight responsibility, but remember, you're not the worker bees. Yes, share your perspective, how things can be approved, but respect the voice of experience when the answer is no or not at this time. We need to be confident that when a contract is awarded, that the purchasing process has been followed by all parties. So no citizen should have to do their own background checks. We want to build trust with the system. And finally, to our state legislators, our state and local legislators, thank you for letting us know that self-preservation is not just in Congress, but is now the creed of politics. Hear no evil, see no evil, speak no evil, unless it becomes a campaign slogan. You all have a great night, and we look forward to a great school year.
Thank you, Ms. Wingfield. Next, Michelle Clark, Individual Reopening Presentation. Is Ms. Clark out there?
I did not see Ms. Clark either. I did pull over Donna Young.
All right, Ms. Young. There was no topic given, so Ms. Young, it just says individual.
Yes, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, CEO, Ms. Goldson. I am going to speak with regards to, as all the, and board members. As all the board members probably already know that I had a conversation with my representative, Ms. Ahmed. What was apparent is that in seeing a response from her that I felt to make clear what I believe to be fair and open competition and what it is not. Our conversation involves several concerns that I voiced regarding the board, the board and administration's actions regarding the selection of an attorney's contract. We discussed how moving forward with the completion of the procurement process as there was a no vote to go forth with the next individual on that evaluation criteria. The good thing about, about that is that we did have a dialogue, and I wanted it to be clear that I am not just speaking from my experience, but I'm also speaking from what is documented in our procurement process and the procurement manual. Okay, once Mr. Robinson Group was deemed ineligible for the award, the good thing about following industry standards is it helps everyone to be clear on what the next step is. And that is not apparent because either the information is not being communicated from the administration that the Purchasing and Supply Office manages all procurement processes. And all departments are to follow those processes as well. When we do that, we prevent bid steering contract fraud, FAR and CUMAR regulations, that's federal and state. We ensure fair and open competition. Specifically in our procurement manual, it says that all competitive bids proposals and offers received will be evaluated by PGCPs staff according to evaluation criteria established and included in the bid proposal documents. It also says that when the evaluation team will be established by the procurement director and the user department or its designated. The other thing that is mentioned there is that bids quotations received will be evaluated by the senior buyer or procurement clerk soliciting those services. Benders offering the best value and delivery that meet the requirement of PGCPs will be given a purchase order or a contract. This is, this obviously wasn't understood as that did not happen with regards to the attorney's contract. There were two bidders evaluated equally, and those bidders were first and second. Let me just finish this segment. If in fact we follow the procurement process, we can eliminate all of the conflict between the board's contracts that are submitted and the Purchasing and Supply Office. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. Timothy Meyer, Mount Rainier Elementary PTO, Investing in Outdoor Education.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. I'm here to emphasize the importance of investing in outdoor education. Last spring, our PTO, as part of a plan with Neighborhood Design Center, created and built an outdoor classroom in instant success with teachers and students. We had the honor to host county executive Alsabrooks and Dr. Goldson, and I walked her through how we curated the space, salvaging stumps from neighborhood trees to create natural seating, buying some raised planters, fencing decorated by a local artists, adding some colorful paint, all for less than $1,000. Our pilot outdoor classroom proved the demand, constantly in use with a signup sheet as teachers competed to use the space. We're eager to create more outdoor spaces and help other schools too. But PTOs need top to bottom PGCPs support. Dr. Goldson has a terrific vision. Our principals and teachers on the ground get it. It's somewhere in the middle that the cogs of PGCPs bureaucracy can get in the way. A few examples. Your educational facilities master plan says outdoor classrooms should be covered, so our PTO got a sunshade donated. But instead of helping, a building services employee told us to go to deal, to go deal with D-PY. I don't have to tell all of you how much fun that can be. We try to incorporate trees for natural shade. Yet another middleman employee told us that schools shouldn't have trees near them, literally. I say every tree, every plant, every piece of nature is a way to help our kids learn. We need more of them, not less. One more example. We secured grant funding to repaint old peeling doors in front of school, replacing puky beige with vibrant school colors. Our thanks was a lecture on not pre-clearing the can of paint first. The reality is, though, many parents right now are worried. The number one concern among my school's parents is unmasked lunches indoors. Other local schools have shared similar concerns. We need to create as many outdoor opportunities possible for our kids to be outdoors, for instruction, for recess, for dining when possible on different campuses. The return to school plan is a good start, but I'm here to say that suggestions sometimes aren't enough. I'm asking, find some small amount, even $2,000 or $3,000 per school out of a $2.3 billion budget, and direct schools to be creative and build outdoor spaces. Create contests between schools, provide incentives and real support to innovate, not roadblocks. We can think outside the box. We can be not only PGCPs proud, but PGCPs pioneers. And most importantly, we can embrace the outdoors and keep our kids and teachers safe. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Ms. Berkeley, Ms. Pope sent a text indicating she's in. She had difficulty with the link. Can you let her in?
I'll pull her over. The next person that's available is Amina Johnson. She's already over.
I had Candace Philpot.
They're not here. The next available speaker that's in, that's in the queue is Amina Johnson.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Johnson will speak on transportation.
Hello, yes. I had a concern about transportation. This year, my daughter, her bus stop is 1.3 miles away from my house. I called Transportation. Transportation told me that the board, the school board, took a vote on community bus stops, and there, I understand there is a shortage of bus drivers this year, but it's very unsafe for children. There's no sidewalks where I live. She would have to walk in the street. It's early in the morning. She goes to a specialty school, not a charter school. We've always had transportation. I have to be at work. There's nobody to take her. And I'm very concerned, not just for myself, but other children who have to walk to bus stops that are 1.3 miles or miles away from their home. I was told that the board took a vote on this, and I'm just saying maybe it needs to be reassessed and readdressed because there were several parents who are concerned about this new one-stop or community bus stops. I also called to speak to my representative. He has not responded back to me. I'm very worried because school starts on Tuesday. I also work in a school in DC, and I have no idea how my child is supposed to get to school because she cannot walk 24 minutes away.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Our next speaker, who have you pulled in, Ms. Berkeley?
Amity Pope.
Ms. Pope, PG Changemakers Coalition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Miller and other esteemed members of the board, I'm speaking on behalf of PG Changemakers as an organization. Our members, residents, homeowners, business owners, and hardworking folks that are members of PG Changemakers are very concerned about their children returning to a welcoming environment. In the state of Maryland, suspensions have already begun in other counties. And for those places, it is only the first week of school. Our members want to know when they send their child back into the buildings that they will be welcomed with caring, thoughtful, and considerate adults that are more than prepared to transition into academics by being responsive first to the needs of these virtual learners. Our members want to be reassured that the district is going to manage students socializing from an automatic zero tolerance mindset when onboarding students from being in a virtual environment of learning and transitioning to face-to-face socializing in a very welcoming way. Our members also want you to know that they send their very best to school, and they want assurance that their child will not be approached with a business-as-usual type of response. Additionally, with the number of pedestrian deaths happening, as the other speaker indicated, they are very much concerned about the one community bus stops. Please address these so that our members feel that their students will be safe in schools and on the way to schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. Has Candace Philpot signed in, Ms. Berkeley?
No, ma'am. I just did a check of all the remaining people that were on the list, and none of them have on the attendee list. So that concludes your list.
Thank you. Well, this concludes public comment. The testimony of the communists who registered and provided written or electronic testimony have been posted on board docs for review by board members and the public. Now we will move into work session, work session topics. 4.1, Prince George's County Public Schools reopening for the 2021-22 school year. Dr. Goldson, would you please introduce 4.1?
Thank you. And before I give the introduction, can staff, board staff, please pull up the PowerPoint presentation for today. While they are doing that, I will give an introduction. We are five days away from the first day of school, and the opening of school this year feels completely different than it did before. For many of our students, this is the first time that they've been in school for 17 months while others are returning from their hybrid experience this past spring or summer. Staff from all divisions in PGCPs have taken great care in providing guidance and support to our schools as we reengage our students and their families. Tonight's presentation provides an overview of the work each division has done to truly support the core of our work, from the time students get on the bus in the morning until they return home after school. I am honored to be joined by members of the executive leadership team this evening to present you this information because it truly takes all of us to execute this amazing school year. We will begin with Dr. Kyra Libby, our Strategic Initiatives Officer. You can move, we will begin on slide three. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goldson. Good evening to all board members. The Maryland State Department of Education required that all local school systems have their draft reopening plans for this school year posted on the website by August 17th. I'm happy to share that we had our draft plan posted and submitted to MSDE on Friday, August 13th. It is a living document, so it will be revised as needed throughout the school year. We are still waiting for feedback from MSDE. We have not received the feedback as of yet. Next slide, please. For the second year in a row, we have a reopening plan committee to give us input and feedback on our draft plan. The committee will give us feedback throughout the school year. This school year, we have 64 members representing students, parents, central office staff, school-based administrators, counselors, union representatives, teachers, that includes special education and ESOL, along with medical advisors. Next slide. Our draft reopening plan consists of the following topics, from academics to health and safety, transportation, mental and behavioral health support, along with information on the vendor-managed childcare programs, formerly known as before and after care. Next slide. And where can you find our draft reopening plan? That is in English, Spanish, and French at the link that is on this slide. It's a direct link to the PGCPs website to our draft reopening plan. And I will now turn the presentation over to Dr. Fawcett, our Chief Operating Officer.
Good evening, board members. Today, I want to talk a little bit about, first of all, our transportation highlights. As most of you know, we have adopted a new Stop Finder app for our mobile devices for our parents to track buses in real time and to notify families of late arrivals. We also have a new online transportation resolution system for parents to communicate their questions and concerns regarding transportation via an online portal. Student bus notification postcards went out the week of August 23rd. They went out, they went out in batches, but if parents need real-time updates, those are available through the Stop Finder app. Next slide, please. So talk a little bit about the transportation safety measures that we instituted last spring and are continuing with this fall. All students on buses will be required to wear face coverings, and proper physical distancing are recommended at the bus stops also. Face coverings will be required for all students while they're riding the bus. Those students with medical exemptions from wearing face masks will be seated using appropriate social distancing tactics. While waiting to exit the bus, we are asking students to remain seated and not to congregate in the aisles. Please ask students to adhere to all directives provided by the drivers and follow all transportation bus rules at all times. If we have a student with no medical exemption or transportation notes in their IAP, and they refuse to wear a mask, the student will not be allowed to ride the bus to and from school. Please refer to the PGC Students' Rights and Responsibilities and the face mask covering modification process. This does not mean that if a student forgets their mask, they will not be allowed to ride the bus. All bus drivers will be equipped with extra masks. So in case students forget their bus, we provided one before boarding the bus. Next slide, please. Just a little bit about our staffing. I'm quite sure everyone realizes that there's a shortage of bus drivers nationwide. We are no different. Currently, we have a driver headcount of 940 drivers. We have approximately 40 drivers who are on leave, on leave, and not able to drive, giving us about 900 drivers daily on hand. We have a total bus runs or bus routes of 1,133. So that leaves us approximately 193 drivers short. Our bus drivers will be doing their best to schedule double routes to have buses return, to pick up students so that we can make sure that we can get our students to school as expeditiously as possible. Next slide, please. We'll talk a little bit about our COVID-19 safety preparation. So as we did in the spring, we will be providing bottled water to all schools. So all schools will be provided bottled water. Students and staff will not be able to use the water fountains as they have been locked. will not be able to use the water fountains as they have been locked off. There is at least one bottle filled fountain, however, in every school that staff and students can use to refill water bottles. We've also disinfected on a daily basis over 19 million square feet of building space in our portfolio and we continue to do that on a daily basis. We've purchased 3,000 air purifiers for classrooms. We've also purchased over 300 air purifiers or what we call scrubbers for our temporary buildings that need them. We recently purchased state-of-the-art disinfecting equipment such as 400 electrostatic disinfecting machines that have been disseminated to all schools to use on a daily basis. And we've also recently acquired 50 Atabot Ultraviolet UVC Disinfecting Robots. These robots will be deployed to schools on an as-needed basis if there are issues where we have multiple COVID outbreaks. This is the same grade of disinfectant that most hospitals use in operating rooms. Next slide, please. So these are just some more information about our preparation. As you all know, we've implemented disinfectant procedures and schedules that are designed to meet current CDC recommendations. We've continued to provide training and we've done so for over 400 custodial supervisors at this time. And you can take a look at the crucial supplies. We have enough supplies on hand and we're making sure and asking schools to please reorder or let someone know before they run out. One thing I can tell you is if it's dealing with disinfectant or dealing with cleanliness, we have those supplies in the warehouse and we can get them out at a moment's notice if needed. As most of you know, or been told, we have over 12,000 employees who currently have been scheduled or have their vaccinations. As we, as you know, we schedule vaccinations in the summer for those students of ours who were over 12 were able to receive the vaccine. And as we did last spring, we instituted COVID vaccine and mandatory testing for all staff. That simply means that we've asked them to provide proof that they are vaccinated. If they have not been, then they will be required to undergo mandatory weekly testing. At this time, I'd like to turn over the next slides to Dr. Helen Coley, who was our chief of schools. And she will speak to you a little bit about how we return to in-person learning.
Thank you, Dr. Fawcett, and good evening, everyone. Excited I am. As you are aware, our teachers returned last week. Our schools officially are open for preparedness. And I'm seeing some great things during my visits to each school and we're certainly ensuring the presence of safe environments for our students and staff alike. The daily activities and back to school events, the next couple of slides, I'd like to share with you specifically what things will be occurring at each school during the regular instructional day. There will be full-time, five days a week, in-person learning. All of our students are required to wear masks at all times while inside and outside during recess times. Students transition to classes per individual schedules. Now this is mainly specific to our secondary learners. Our secondary learners have always transitioned to classes. Principals are working vigorously to ensure the presence of safety or safe transitions as students are moving from one class to the other. Differentiated lunch and recess models are occurring at each school. There is no cookie cutter approach. Each principal is designing lunch and recess models that are specific to safety measures that have been imposed at each site. School uniforms will continue in each school. Our students, just as they were wearing uniforms prior to, they will continue to wear uniforms now. Now our kindergartners and preschool students. Kindergartners riding the bus will continue to wear their orange vests. And our pre-K students will wear the lime green vests. So the lime vests and the orange vests are to be worn by pre-K and kindergarten students that are bus riders. One tomorrow, the third, we are excited because that will be an opportunity for a student orientation day. Now the student orientation day specifically will be for students in grades kindergarten, pre-K and first. And those will be upon the schedules that have been provided to parents by principals. In addition to that, we are also providing opportunities for our students in transition grades. That is this year's students that are in transition grades in addition to those students from last year. Last year as well, because students have not had an opportunity, unless they were in the hybrid model last year, to actually see the building and to actually get a feel for the presence of the instructional environment that they will be learning in upon their return. Virtual back-to-school nights will be occurring at each school. Those dates have already been determined and information specific to is on each school's website. Thank you. Next slide. Breakfast and lunch will be served free of charge for the entire school year to all students. That is for the entire school year for all students. And specifically, what's going to continue to provide for us a safe environment is that the students will not have to wait to put in their PIN numbers. So it will pretty much be a grab and go. They will grab their bags and proceed accordingly without hesitation. Elementary schools participating in the Maryland Meals for Achievement Classroom Breakfast Program will continue to have breakfast delivered to their classrooms. And we recognize that there will be days when we may have inclement weather. On those days, we are also aware of the need for schedules that will be accommodating to such. And those schedules are being created by our building leaders now. Now breakfast, lunch and supper will be provided to all students daily. And what is this going to look like? They're going to get supper too, yes. It still will be in a grab and go fashion. The students will grab their lunches and proceed out, breakfast proceed out. And each principal is setting up a structure so that as students are exiting for the day, they will be able to pick up their supper as well. Now specifically for our virtual learners, our virtual learners will be provided meal boxes as well. They are, and the food and nutrition office has created about 17 sites where students will actually of this virtual program, go and pick up their bag lunches, boxed lunches for a period of time. On next week, which is a short week, the lunches and breakfast will be selected for two days. That is for next Wednesday, the first day for our students and next Thursday. Now on next Friday, students will pick up a meal box that will be inclusive of five meals. That is five breakfast, five lunch and five suppers. They will pick those up at the designated locations. More information will be forthcoming with regard to where those designated locations are. But it's about 16 or 17 locations to date. Information that was informing to where those sites would be was taken from the number of students that we currently have participation, participating, excuse me, in the virtual learning program. Next slide, please. Differentiated classroom setups and student use of technology will be occurring daily. I've had an opportunity myself to actually visit into classrooms and in doing so, I've seen where feasible. The desks that are three feet apart to ensure the provision of safety for our students. Instructional delivery will occur for our students just as it did previous to us being out for the pandemic during the allocated times for each subject area. Could you move up just a little bit, please? Okay, thank you. Pull out and push in programs for our English learners, special education students, 504 students and students in the talented and gifted programs will continue as well with safety measures in place. There will be virtual classroom designations as well within our elementary schools and within our grade six classrooms at the middle school level. Students will transition to classes per their individual schedules. Now as we are aware, most elementary students are in self-contained classroom settings, meaning that they remain in their classrooms, same classrooms during the course of the day. However, our students in our upper-level classrooms, secondary specifically, they do transition to their classes per the schedules that they will be provided. Educational online programs and evening virtual programs will remain virtual at all high schools as was done throughout. The next slide, please. My colleague, Chief of Technology, Dr. Andrew Zuckerman, will share this.
Thank you, Dr. Coley, and good evening, board members. I'm going to talk a little bit about the in-school experience and I'll talk a little bit about virtual in a moment as well. So in school, this year, students can definitely expect to see a much more robust digital learning environment than we've had in years past. And that's because we, we obviously now are a one-to-one district. And so what that means is that projects in school and at home will be able to be completed fully electronically. Access to technology resources that previously were unavailable will now be available. And so that's really exciting. At the same time, we're looking forward to our teachers enhancing the in-person learning experience by virtue of all of the tools that we acquired last year. And teachers have grown quite accustomed and, and experts at using tools such as Paradek, NearPod, Jamboard. So, so we're really excited this year to work with our staff to, to build out the possibilities of these instructional technology tools for students in school. Improvements that we've made systemically, I noted that we now have a one-to-one environment, meaning that we have one mobile computer, whether it's a Chromebook or an iPad for every student in the district. We are looking forward, we're not there yet, we're looking forward to acquiring interactive whiteboards once we get approved for our funding through the third round of ESSER funding, the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. So we're looking forward to putting in or receiving that, that funding that will allow us to expand our smart boards, our Boxlight, our, our other interactive whiteboards throughout the county for as many classrooms as possible because we know there's a need there. We're rolling out a new learning management system this year called Canvas and that will continue to strengthen our digital presence. And knock on wood, we haven't heard about this for a little while, cybersecurity threats, but this is ongoing. And so we're in the middle of a external cybersecurity risk assessment and that will inform future investments that we're going to need to make because, because the more that we are virtual, the more that we are digital rather. This is an area that we, we just can't let our guard down in. So we're going to continue to invest in this area. Next slide, please. In terms of virtual learning opportunities, we have several different opportunities this year. The first, and I just want to clarify, at grades K through six is a temporary virtual program. And this was a program that we originally designed for students who are not eligible for the vaccine yet, under the age of 11. And as, as the summer wore on, we were in really good shape earlier in the summer, right? And then as the summer wore on and the rise of the Delta variant, we started to hear more and more about the interest and concern on the parts of families, particularly families of students under the age of 11. And we made the decision, very bold decision, the only one in the state, to, to boldly expand the program to families who, who wanted to be a part of it. And so I'm pleased that with the numbers that we were able to accomplish by our deadline of August 20th, we're going to be serving over 12,000 students virtually. And this will be temporary until the vaccine is, is available or widely available for students under the age of 11. For students who 12 and older in grades seven through 12, we did not design a virtual program because of the pandemic. In fact, what we did was we wanted to design a program that is innovative, that capitalizes on the best practices with respect to digital learning. And we launched a new specialty program that, that is small in size, the capacity of about 700 students. And this is for students who want to make virtual learning their, their new permanent approach to education. Really excited about this program and looking forward to the possibilities here and growing it in years to come as we learn and get really familiar with all the tools and all the possibilities. We do have existing programs in place. We have our evening virtual learning program, which actually was launched at the start of the pandemic or last school year rather. And we have educational online programming, which these programs exist to meet student interest, credit recovery, advancement. So these are still in place at our high schools and we intend to leverage those to the fullest extent possible. I'm sure there'll be some questions about this later. I'm happy to speak to it, but I'll turn it back to Dr. Coley now to talk about mental health and behavioral support.
Thank you, Dr. Zuckerman. I, I did want to bring to your attention the, this particular slide, which actually outlines specifically what will be occurring at the school level with regard to the professional school counselors and mental health clinicians and the extensive supports that they will be providing to our students and staff members. They will be working cohesively together to make sure that these actions are in fact provided and available for each student. Next slide, please. Thank you. In-person athletics. Fall athletics actually began on August the 11th for in-person learning and virtual students. Fall season includes football, culinary softball, boys and girls cross-country soccer, golf and volleyball. Athletic directors will develop individual schedules for practices and they have done so. Ball sports for middle school will include baseball and softball. Now masks are required for participation. Masks are required for participation for both indoor and outdoor sports. I want to reiterate that we are requiring our students to wear masks. Athletes will be permitted to compete without their mask only. Otherwise, they are expected to be worn at all times. Thank you. The next slide, please. Dr. Judy White, Chief of Academics, will lead us into conversations around reimagining the possibilities.
Thank you, Dr. Coley, and good evening, board members. This year, as we reimagine the learning possibilities for our students, it will be done with an equity-centered lens. This lens acknowledges the pandemic and its impact on interrupted instruction and learning loss. Our goal is to provide support for students who were impacted by time out of school as well as those who experienced challenges during distance learning. We will focus on the goals established in our strategic plan and more specifically, educational excellence, excellence and equity and workforce and operational excellence. Next slide. Goal one of our strategic plan focuses on educational excellence. And we know that student data is critical to making decisions. So time will be spent this year making sure data is used to drive all instructional decisions. Time has been built in during the week for teachers to have small group discussions with students where they will discuss the areas of focus and growth. In addition, there will be tutoring and intervention opportunities for students needing additional support. As we think about a more robust process for curriculum implementation and organization, in addition to our current Google Classroom, we will be utilizing the Canvas Learning Management System that Dr. Zuckerman already spoke to. This platform will allow teachers to manage all instructional materials and programs in one place for their students. We've also worked to enhance and integrate technology tools directly into the curriculum documents so that we do not lose sight of the many advantages learned from the pandemic. As a part of our new strategic plan, it was necessary to normalize the academic journey for our students. That means making sure the entire school district understands our why and our how. In this image, our why is reflective of our students. It is why we do this work. As we serve students from birth to graduation, we want to make sure we produce students who are global citizens, communicators, critical thinkers, creators and innovators and goal-directed learners. We believe these skills will allow them to enter college and the workforce ready. Our how is the focus and commitment in our schools and classrooms that allow us to achieve our why. It is making sure that culture and community is established in each of our schools and in the way that central office supports them. It is making sure that there is a focus on curriculum planning and implementation. It is ensuring that every day, the learning experiences for our students are rich and engaging. Lastly, it becomes relevant that assessment and reflection take place. It is the way we identify what students have learned, examine instructional implementation and plan ways to reteach. An example of one of the changes we're implementing for our early literacy reading curriculum is to revamp and make sure it is grounded in the science of reading. This allows for equity-centered learning through providing a comprehensive curriculum implementation map, a systematic scope and sequence of phonics instruction, explicit instruction using research-based instructional practices and intensive lessons. This is also done in conjunction with our teachers being trained. This is also done in conjunction with our teachers being trained in the science of reading. An example for mathematics is that all students will have the opportunity this year to participate in rigorous performance-based mathematical tasks. It's, they are, will be grounded in rich discourse and the environment work will represent that. This is an environment where teachers not only expect students to do the math, but one where they can discuss their process and reasoning with their peers. Both our teachers and students will have actions and responsibilities to implement through this process. The use of performance tasks also assists us as they require students to present supporting evidence in an argument, solve complex problems and build physical and mental models. Next slide. Excellence in equity continues to be a priority for our districts. To start our work with students, we first offered summer learning programs to those students who demonstrated learning loss last school year. It was then opened and offered to other students as seats remain available. We made sure the standards that were focused on were critical transition skills needed to be learned for the grade they were exiting. We have also established this year the bridging forward guides that will allow teachers to review foundational skills, processes and standards while making connections to the content students will explore this year. These guides will be used during the first three weeks of school. Our digital tools and resources will also be made available for our students and teachers to use in the classroom for both synchronous and asynchronous instruction. Next slide. When we think about goal three, our workforce and operational excellence, we have to make sure that those who engage with our students, whether from a school or central office, understand the systemic priorities. Therefore, learning opportunities will continually be provided throughout the year to build sustainable practices and to provide instructional support. The work of the literacy plan remains grounded in reading, writing, reasoning across all content areas. However, the need for students to be grounded in digital literacy and higher order critical skills have be, also become evident thus, the new digital literacy plan 2.0. It was also critical for us to create a five-year ESOL strategic plan focused on improving academic achievement for all learners and to reintroduce the special education strategic plan that focuses on improving academic achievement for our students with disabilities. Lastly, we also created guides for our parents and community partners so they will be clear on the skills students should learn at each grade level and ways to seamlessly support them at home and in the community. And now I will turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Doug Strater, Chief Accountability Officer.
Thank you, Dr. White. Good evening, board members. This year is going to be an exciting year. We're intending on administering our full assessment program this year, which is outlined in the following three slides. This first slide, uh, highlights the only significant addition to our assessment program for this year. That is the early fall NCAP assessments. As required within the federal Every Student Succeeds Act, public schools are required to assess all students in grades three through eight and once in high school and ELA, which is English, Language Arts and Mathematics. They're also required to assess science once at the elementary, middle and high school levels. Due to the pandemic, the Maryland State Department of Education, requested of the US Department of Education to defer last spring's assessment program to this fall. With that said, students this year will be taking last year's spring assessment early this fall. So as an example, a fourth grade student enrolled this year will be taking the third grade, actually an abbreviated third grade assessment from last spring. Uh, so we're looking forward to this. We'll be able to get, uh, some information at the standard level as far as how our students are performing. Uh, so again, assessment time, we're looking forward to this. Next slide, please. This slide highlights our district assessment program. In addition to informing instruction, each of these assessments play a critical role in either identification of our students for some of our specialty programs or they play some type of compliance role, uh, whether it be evaluation whatever the case may be for our, our district, our state or our federal programs. The testing time for our district program is governed by the state law. It's the less testing, more learning act of Maryland. In that, it requires us to stay under a cap of assessment minutes for our internal assessment program. Looking and doing the analysis for each of the assessments, we are still in compliance of that act. Next slide, please. This last slide highlights our federal and state assessment programs. Included in the program, first item, you see the kindergarten readiness assessment. We also have the Maryland School Survey. This was not administered last year, it will be administered this year. This is that school climate survey. Uh, we also have the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program uh, for grades three through eight in high school that I mentioned earlier, as well as our access test for English, uh, acquisition. And last but not least, I want to highlight that federal assessment, the National Assessment of Education Progress, the NAEP assessments. We will be administering those this spring as well. In conclusion, I'd like to share that our, um, assessment calendar, there's been a lot of requests to see that calendar, to see the dates and to get a better understanding, the feel of when the assessments are going to occur and at what grade levels. That assessment calendar has been published on our pgcps.org website. If you have any questions, please go to that site. You can download the calendar, you can follow up with our office. So with that said, I'd like to say thank you and I'd like to introduce Dr. Kristi Murphy, our Chief of Human Resources.
Thank you, Dr. Strater. Good evening, board members. As you know, human resources is responsible for staffing district positions throughout the calendar year. However, come July 1, there are certain positions that we prioritize as central to opening schools. This chart outlines our July 1 vacancies. And as of today, September 2nd, I want to highlight our filled positions as well as share information with you regarding our teacher vacancies. Today, we have filled all of our principal vacancies. We have filled 97% of our teacher vacancies. We have staffed 85% of our bus routes and we have staffed 93% of our custodial positions. What is an anomaly this year, however, is actually our nursing staff. While we started this school year, the July 1 year with 22 vacancies, we did fill 17 of those positions. But as of today, we've had 11 retirements and resignations. So our numbers remain somewhat stagnant with, um, our nurses. But we are working with health services to provide coverage to those schools as well as to continue to recruit and fill those positions. I wanted to loop back to our teachers, however, because right now that is one of our most critical need. As you can see, over the last few years, we have had a strong retention rate. But of course, each year we continue to have natural attrition due to retirement and resignations. While we have filled 97% of our teacher vacancies today for the year, as we progress to the next slide, I'd like to point out that you will see teacher recruitment has a limited timeframe for which we can attract and hire teachers. It is not like our other positions in the district that we staff throughout. Teacher recruitment really occurs between January and April, and that's when we say we want you to come join our family. And then between March and July is when teachers begin to commit to school districts. Outside of these windows, teacher hiring and filling vacancies becomes an extreme challenge. But we are fortunate that we have a substitute pool that we utilize with 85% or more of our individuals in the pool do hold college degrees. And it's also a great recruitment strategy for us to convince those individuals to come do this as a full-time teacher with us. Next slide. Our recruitment efforts range from college fair, career fairs and social media. And it's through these fairs and social medias that we gain more than 80% of our hires, which we included this year in our priority staffing for our Bridge to Excellence Schools as well as Priority Schools. This year, we also attempted to reach out to our wonderful retirees to ask them to come on back. However, we were not successful in getting them to want to come out of retirement full-time, but many were interested in joining our short-term substitute list, which also increased the number of highly qualified substitutes that we will have, um, with those individuals being former teachers. Next slide. So while we talk about our recruitment strategies for our support staff, what we really need from everyone is really how we recruit for our support staff. While, um, our teacher recruitments, I shared with you those efforts. It's really through word of mouth and you all being brand ambassadors that we get our support staff. And as you can see from this chart, we do offer paid training for our bus drivers and our attendants. For our nurses, we do require that you have at least two years' experience in pediatric nurse, school health or community health. And for our food services and building cleaning staff, we do ask that you have some type of experience that if we prefer that you have some type of experience, um, when applying for those positions. So we look forward to your help and to continuing to recruit for these positions. Next, I will turn it over now to our Chief Financial Officer, Michael Herbstman.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Good evening, everyone. Next, we'll be discussing the recent federal coronavirus relief grants and, uh, specifically the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund part three or the ESR three grant, uh, grant program. Uh, as a reminder, there have been three primary sets of federal COVID-19 legislation. First, the CARES Act. Second was the CRSA. And third is the American Rescue Plan Act or ARP. Between these three acts, we've received a total of 14 grants, which are outlined, uh, on the right of this slide. Uh, tonight I'll focus specifically on ESR three, which is by far the largest of these and includes more than half of the total funding of all the grants. For anyone interested in hearing more about the other COVID-19 grant programs, uh, I would refer you to board docs for presentations, uh, that were done previously on December 10th, 2020 and within 2021 on March 25th, May 12th, June 10th and August 11th. Uh, next slide, please. In early August, uh, we released a public survey to understand what all of our stakeholders wanted us to use the ESR three funding for. We received more than 8,000 total responses. More than half of the responses were from, uh, PGCPS parents and guardians. Uh, more than one-third were from our teachers and other employees. And I'm especially happy to report that we received approximately 1,000 responses directly from our students. Next slide, please. Respondents were asked to rank various broad spending categories in their priority order from one most important to eight least important. And this chart shows that the, uh, highest priority categories from the survey were, uh, first, technology, second, addressing pandemic-related learning loss, third, virtual school, and four, operations and facilities. The survey results were, uh, well-aligned with our initial expectations as we began to prepare the grant application. However, we did amend our application further to ensure even better alignment with the survey results before we submitted by the, uh, final application deadline on August 17th. Next slide, please. Uh, in our ESR three application, we, uh, grouped the priorities in a very similar way to the survey. Uh, first transformative technology and equitable access was the highest rated on the survey results and the place where we plan to use the most funding. Uh, that includes, uh, many of the items Dr. Zuckerman talked about earlier. Uh, classroom whiteboards, uh, student staff devices and our virtual school programming, which alone ranked third as a separate category on the survey. Under COVID-19 student staff safety, uh, we plan to complete $51 million in HVAC modular and other air quality projects, uh, as well as, uh, completing staff COVID-19 testing, providing more than 48 million bottles of water to our schools next year. Next slide, please. The next largest category is addressing student learning loss. This ranks second in the survey results and third in the ESR three budgeted amount, uh, partially because we had other grants in addition to ESR three that were more, uh, specifically for this purpose. Uh, the learning loss funds that we'll use will go to continuing our current tutoring programs, expanded summer school for next summer and targeted supports for students in our Bridge to Excellence Schools. Uh, we also plan to use $42 million on mental and behavioral health supports, uh, as Dr. Coley addressed earlier. Uh, most of that is going to the, uh, plan, which was previously presented in June to make full-time therapists available in all of our schools by FY 2025. Next slide, please. Uh, next, we've included teacher and staff supports for the new educational delivery models totaling $7 million. And finally, we're using funding from ESR three to, uh, equitably include our public charter schools and the allocation of all the COVID-19 grants. And all public charter school enrollment makes up 5% of our total PGCPS charter and non-charter enrollment. These schools will be allocated 5% of that, of the total for all of the COVID-19 grants. Um, next, you'll hear from our Associate Superintendent of Communications and Community Engagement, Ms. Ravenhill.
Thank you, Mr. Herbstman, and good evening, everyone. The Office of Communications and Community Engagement is working very hard to make sure that families have the information they need to get ready to reconnect on the first day of school. I'd like to start by briefly reviewing instructions for accessing the SchoolMax Family Portal, which includes information on grades and more. Parents should have the following information on hand, um, their personal email address and student ID number and the personal details and contact information listed on the slide. Next, you can find the link to access SchoolMax on the PGCPS website at www.pgcpss.org. And we encourage you to use a computer, not a cell phone or a tablet. Once registered, you can download the SchoolMax Family Portal mobile app. Now on to School Messenger, our new platform for sending both school level and school system level notifications to families by recorded phone messages, emails, text message and newsletters. Uh, School Messengers allows us to send targeted messages to all families or segment by school or grade level to give families the most relevant news and updates. This new system also allows us to segment by language preferences, which is important in honoring our commitment to communicate with families in their native language as best we can. Families who are not receiving PGCPS news or who are new to the school system can subscribe by visiting the PGCPS website again at pgcpss.org, scrolling all the way down to the bottom of the page and clicking on the banner inviting them to sign up for text messages, emails and newsletters. Also within Messenger is the ability to choose the type of news you want to receive, select your preferred language and select topics. For example, you can receive updates from your Board of Education member or important news from the school system. That is an overview of how School Messenger works and how signup. We do encourage families to also subscribe to any different tools or apps in place at your child's school, such as Remind or ClassDojo. And this will help you in making sure that you have access to any and all information available. Next, we know there is a lot of information, excuse me, a lot of interest in the information we're tracking on COVID-19 related building closures. And that information is also available on the PGCPS website. Under the important information section on the website, you will see a card titled COVID-19 related updates. We will do our best to update this information as best we can and as soon as possible with details regarding the date the incident was reported, the building name and general location. Finally, I encourage all of you to stay connected with PGCPS through our various communications platforms. Our website is available in English and Spanish and you can find any school webpage through the main PGCPS website along with the school system's calendar. Please visit the Ready to Reconnect section for back-to-school highlights. The school system's phone number is 301-952-6000. You can also sign up for email, text alerts and newsletters, as I mentioned. Watch us on Comcast and Verizon, uh, look for PGCPS TV, channel 96 Comcast and 38 Verizon. Follow us on Facebook in English and Spanish at PGCPS or at PGCPS en español. On Instagram, we are at PGCPS. On Twitter, Twitter, look for at PGCPS or at Dr. Monica CEO. On YouTube, we're on there at PGCPS Video. And you can connect with PG, excuse me, with Prince George's County Public Schools on LinkedIn. Many of our schools are also very active on social media, so please look for their pages on those platforms as well. Thank you. And at this time, I will turn the presentation back over to Dr. Goldson.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. This concludes our presentation. We are now open to take questions, Madam Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hill. This concludes our presentation. We are now open to take questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
My apologies. I see several hands up, and I hope I'm calling them in the correct order. Board Member Ahmed. But first, I'd like to thank the staff on those presentations, which were very comprehensive. And I'm hoping that many of our parents and community persons have gotten a lot of information as well. Board Member Ahmed.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. This, I have a question for Dr. Murphy and then a question for Dr. Fawcett. Dr. Murphy, I, I feel regularly concerned with our systems shortages when it comes to nurses, but especially now while we're in the middle of a pandemic and it's clear that our nurses have a very pivotal role in the safety of our schools. And so I was glad to hear from you during your presentation that we're working to get support from the Department of Health Services for the school year. But understanding that, will one hundred percent of our schools have some health professional support going into the school year? And if not, what is the plan for those schools?
Thank you, Board Member Ahmed, for that question. So I'm also, you know me and presentations, I'm also writing it down to make sure I get all, get it, get a response to you. So we are ensuring that we do have coverage in schools, so whether that be an R N or an L P N. But I would like to follow up with you to give you the specific plan. And also so that I can have that from Dr. Tracy Jones, our Supervisor of Nursing Services, so that you can make sure our school health, so that you can make sure you have the exact information. Because I'm sure our families are interested in that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. And I'll ask if board staff can make sure that's posted as a follow-up item.
Then I just want to add that those are contract nurses that we do acquire to fill those positions at schools, and our nurse managers will also assist filling those vacancies.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Colton. My other question is for Dr. Fawcett. I'm really concerned about the transportation shortfalls, and we've seen the horror stories in other jurisdictions already that have gone back to school around transportation. And so I was wondering, in going online with over twelve thousand of our students, does that help our transportation issue in that fewer students would need to be driven so our current driver force can cover the workload?
So i- in theory, it could, but it all depends on how those students are matriculating to school. Because if you have one or two students off of the bus, those routes are still running, which would inevitably really not going to reduce bus route time. But let me tell you about some things that we're doing. I mean, you know, we're very short. But I, I want to hearken everyone back to the Transportation Task Force that actually went in effect last school year. Many people don't realize it because, you know, we were virtual all last year, but it was the year before that the Transportation Task Force asked us to consolidate bus stops, to go to neighborhood bus stops. We had, we had been, you know, struggling to get drivers, and we figured by reducing the number of stops, this would help us improve transportation. So number one, we're hoping that that will help us. Number two, getting prepared for a shortage i- is advantageous. So we've had our routers actively working on and trying to double routes prior to getting the school year started. Looking for time within routes that buses will be able to double back, get students. We're going to be short. We know it, but we're going to do our best to make sure that we get our schools on time. We are asking parents, and we'll continue to ask parents to support us where possible. And if you have the ability, please transport your students to school. Our schools are working actively on plans to have increased traffic in the morning, but this is going to take a group and community effort. We, I really want to thank our communications team because they've been on the news, they've been, you know, actively recruiting. Our H R department has been supporting us, but we're going to do our best, the best we can. Just want to bring one more thing up. We know that there's some parents who've been having some issues with the new system in terms of accessing it. So we want to reiterate that there are two places that you can find this bus route. For some reason, you haven't received the bus stop card. And number one is that's by downloading the app, the Stop Finder app. But in order to get access to that app, you must have entered your, your email address into a SchoolMax. Once you do that, download the app. Stop Finder will, within twenty-four hours, send you a access code. And the bus stops will be available there. Also, if you have the parent portal, you can also scroll down to the Transportation tab and see your students' bus stop there.
Thank you, Dr. Fawcett. I would just offer just a couple of points of thoughts for administration when it comes to transportation. I mean, if we're looking at trying to get folks, you know, personally driving students to school, is there a way that we can support the carpooling efforts of parents? If that is something that folks decide to do, is there a way that we can help incentivize that? That's something just a thought, a food for thought. And then also, in terms of prospective and current bus drivers, are there short-term incentives? Or are there even stronger established long-term changes that we can make for our drivers? Because, you know, transportation shortages, as you all know, as you've been, you mentioned the task force, is an ongoing issue for us. And so those are just some, some food for thought that I wanted to put out there and offer to administration and to the group. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair. I yield back.
Board Member Boozer Strather.
Thank you so much, Chair Miller. I also have quite a few questions, and I thank my colleague, Ms. Ahmed, who covered some of those already. Like to start with the topic of the air quality and the air purifiers. If, if schools, through parent conversations, teachers and principals are deeming certain rooms in need of these air purifiers, is there the supply? And is there any denial of these requests in the system? I, I'm seeking clarity on that because there does seem to be some parent concerns still about some of the rooms that they're aware of in individual buildings. And secondarily, I want to ask, I'm also hearing that a lot of folks are interested in making the box fan Merv filters that are, I guess, very inexpensive to make. In a, ineffective. Are those, would those be allowed to be brought into the school buildings?
Okay, I can take that question. Couple of things. First, first of all, one of the first things we did during the crisis, the pandemic last year, was we did an assessment of our buildings. So therefore, we did an assessment on those buildings that had fresh air intake naturally. We did which ones used the system. So when we got the air purifier, they were actually dispersed in that venue. We've dispersed over twenty-five hundred air purifiers at this particular point, and we're constantly reassessing. I made, I think, last week when we were in the town hall, I talked about those classrooms that have no windows. A lot of spaces in, and Elmer Roosevelt is actually a good example. That, that is, that is a building that has no windows, but the actual H V A C system brings in fresh air. Our control system enabled us to see if we're having issues anywhere, whether it's with dampers or louvers. And when, when we have issues in certain areas, we bring in air purifiers to supplement. We just recently got notification about those box air fans you're talking about, and we're actually still assessing that. The one worry we have is that if those aren't changed regularly, it could become a fire hazard. But we're looking into that right now, and it may be something that we can move forward with.
Oh, great. I, I appreciate that, and thank you for explaining that, how, how we got to where we are and that this is ongoing assessments. And I think that will give parents some comfort to know that, that there can continue to be requests around concerns in the building and solutions. And for the concern about use of outdoor space for lunch, which I think is probably one of the biggest concerns we're all hearing. Are, are there supplies of extra lunch tables to bring to the schools? How can that be managed around actually being able to seat students outside and inside?
I can, I can answer that question, Ms. Boozer Strathers. For schools that are in need of additional tables, there is a process. It's called the material transfer or the request for additional items to be sent to the school. Many schools are not just opting to, as you are aware, to have lunch in the cafeteria. There may be other rooms designated within the building where the students will grab and go and eat lunches as well. Some opportunities may even exist in classrooms where appropriate for students to have lunch there as well. But whenever a request or additional furniture is needed to accommodate the needs of the school, there is a process in place where each principal may request such.
All right, great. I appreciate that. And moving into more academic questions, I'm interested in the return to sort of all the tangible items, you know, for students who really struggle with online, getting back to, to, you know, tangible books, handwriting on paper, physical projects like science fair. And art, making art, there were some, for those of us who returned to hybrid, there was restrictions on materials for safety. And I just wanted some clarity on, will students have more of that what they used to have? And I'm thinking elementary school, you know, is my experience with my son. But are we returning to that, or there's still going to be a lot of restrictions on some of these physical materials of learning?
Yes, thank you for that question. We will be returning, lessening the restrictions that we've had and returning to more, especially in our younger grades. We know that writing, they need tangible opportunities to hold their pencils, crayons, all the different things they do at those younger ages, especially being back in the building, they're having art and just the other content areas that will come into their class and help serve. We will still be mindful, though, to make sure that they're not materials that they have to swap back and forth. And the other thing to keep in mind, although we're coming back in the buildings, we're still going to have a lot of digital opportunities. You know, since we're one-to-one, we don't want those devices just to be utilized at home, but we want them in the classrooms where teachers have an opportunity to get students to work together, pair together, still be in Google Docs, working and planning and doing blogs and discussions and group projects. There will definitely be opportunities for them to have tangible, hands-on with manipulists and things they need for learning. We know with the younger grades, especially like in mathematics, they need manipulists. So our schools have done a great job looking at their resources, mapping them out, having a plan on how to clean certain things, especially in our younger grades.
Thank you. Ms. Berkeley, is the timer working?
Yeah, time check, please.
Yes, the timer is working. She literally has six seconds left.
Okay.
I'll do round two. I've just turned it off.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Queen.
So as we go into timer, let's just remind staff that we are on a timer, so please don't take long with answering our questions, okay? Because in office, I don't want you guys to take long answering my questions. Okay, so I have a couple of statements. I mean, my question was about cooking class, medical classes, and early childhood. But Dr. Libby, I think you addressed some of that with talking about specialty programs. But I just wanted to remind everybody out in the public that our county executive made a suggestion, an appointment of our CEO. And then as a board, we voted on it. But our CEO, I mean, our CEO makes a lot of decisions on his board. And then just like what's going on now, and it's brought to the board, and we may vote on it, and we may have questions on it. But a lot of decisions are made by CEO and her staff. So when a lot of questions were asked or concerns made, I just want you to realize, you guys, that we have a CEO that was not only appointed, but we also voted on. And she's making the best decisions possible, and she has done a great job. But I do have a question for Dr. Goldson and her staff. The online campus, I know when I came to the board, and Dr. Goldson, you know, one of my biggest pet peeves was about classes being online for students who were not able to do regular schooling. But I'm just wondering why the online campus, and I was thinking high school, but why it has less than ten percent of our students? So that can be answered later on, because I just think we should open it up since we have it from seventh to twelfth grade to a little bit more of our students if we could. The next thing is about the bottled water. What contract did we have? I heard it mentioned by Mr. Herbstman that we spent a lot of money on bottled water. But is it given to him under a contract, or who was the person that we're paying for this bottled water? So I have a concern about that. Not only that, outdoor classrooms, I know one of my school, John Vane, has an outdoor classroom, which is really nice, and I think it's a good idea that we think of using the Easter money for outdoor classrooms, or maybe even pavilions or partnerships with our park and recreation to have that. So more kids can be outside. Things are changing within the county. And then last but not least, as I get this in here, Dr. Fawcett. You know, a lot of parents have been complaining about what was sent out for the buses, and a lot of wrong information has been sent out for some students, but nobody owned up to it. When will we own up to things and be apologetic for when bus schedules were sent out wrong or things like that? I know we had issues with the bus, but let's be more transparent, you guys, as a school system, let's own up and let's be apologetic and say, hey, you know, the system made a mistake, it sent somebody wrong information out, but we are working to correct it. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. Board Member Serong Ruiz.
I need my questions answered.
Oh, I thought you said you didn't want them answered.
I said I don't want you interrupting while I ask my questions, and then they can answer it.
My apologies.
So I can jump in real quick, Board Member Queen, just on the online campus. This is a great question. When, before the Delta variant came about, the interest in the online campus wasn't as great as it was now. And I think that really speaks to just the need, or the concern rather, about, about, about COVID versus who wants to make this their long-term option. So we're very interested in growing this after this year. And so that's our plan. So we're going to start small for the future.
What about the water? Who's the water company? And I mean, who decided on a contract or what water contract? Where's this water coming from?
So Ms. Queen, I can answer that one. So we, we had an existing water contract already in place, which was, had gone through the correct procurement process. As you know, we had a lot of schools who were already on bottled water, typically the five-gallon bottled water. And we just, in an emergency situation, we did not put out a new R F P. We didn't know at the beginning of this year whether we might be able to go back when, when the COVID situation turned with the Delta environment. We made a decision that we would just increase the purchase to make sure that everyone had bottled water this year.
Okay, not to cut you off, thank you for the explanation, but can you bring that back to the Budget Committee? Because I want to make sure we're being fiscal, responsible, and we need to now look at to see, maybe we can get a partnership or cheaper water. Because you're talking about a lot of water and a lot of our contractors, I'm going to be honest with you guys, even our caterers, they charge us too much money. And I get so upset that we pay out that much money for services. So I'm asking you to please bring that back to the Budget Committee.
duly noted.
Thank you.
Is that it? Did anyone else?
The outdoor classrooms, the last one.
Okay.
I thought that was just a recommendation to have a conversation with Maryland National Park and Plan.
We could, or if it could come out, the, some money, maybe to help towards that kind of a good conversation. Thank you so very much.
Due August seventeen, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Is that it? Thank you. You're five minutes, you have thirty seconds left. Okay, Board Member Serong Ruiz.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Administration, for the amazing presentation. And thank you, fellow board members, for asking some of the questions I already did have. So I did want to start by thanking Dr. Fawcett for clarifying specifically the dampeners and air purifiers at Roosevelt. Because as some of you may know, that's actually my school, so I did have that concern with the windows. So thank you for clarifying that. Some of the questions I did have were just about clarification. Firstly, when it came to Stop Finder app and the School Messenger, whether those were available in other languages?
Okay, I can, I can speak to the Stop Finder app in terms of, I actually have to cycle back. I do not have that answer. I would assume that, that they, that it would be, but I'll cycle right back to you and get that information to you.
When you download the app, you'll see it's very similar to like GPS system that you use on your phone.
Okay. And then a few more other questions. And then I know it was mentioned that we have roughly around one hundred forty mental health clinicians in our schools. And noting that we do have around two hundred eight schools, I just wanted more clarification as to how those one hundred forty were actually dispersed, since I know one per school wasn't happening.
Thank you, and we are intending, thank you for that question. We are intending to increase the number of mental health support to our schools throughout the course of the years. However, each professional school counselor does in fact have those skills in many instances, as do the mental health clinicians. We did begin with our K eights. We moved forward with our community schools. There is a mental health clinician in each of our community schools. With regard to the remain, we thought that we'd start then with, with high schools. So this year, they have them in all of our high schools. So each level is represented. We just don't have them in each of our elementary schools. However, the professional school counselors do in many instances have those same skill set. In addition to the professional school counselors will be providing S E L, that's the Social Emotional Learning, classes to our students throughout the course of the week.
Thank you, Dr. Coley. And then my last question was regarding after-school clubs. I know that we mentioned athletics and wearing masks. I know I have some, had some students concerned about whether they would be allowed to be in person. So I just wanted to know if that was being left up to discretion of schools or if P G C P S had.
All students, all sport players are supposed to wear masks at all times. That is the expectation.
And so.
It is not a choice.
And so for after-school clubs, would they be allowed to meet in person?
They may meet.
Yeah.
But they still. Go ahead, Dr. Fawcett. You'll have to wear a mask at all times.
Okay, that was my question. And those were all my questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You had one minute and 46 seconds left. Thank you. So the next hand I see is Board Member Harris.
Hey, thank you for recognizing. Hopefully you all can hear me. Okay. First, I've got a question for you, Dr. Fawcett. I want to piggyback off my colleague, Board Member Boozer Struthers, thank you for the information about those air purifiers, as well as the additional ones you got for those temporary spaces. Can we, can I, can I actually, when we expect to hear back in terms of, I know you said you're looking into additional air purifiers and what parents might be able to utilize if they decide to, based on you looking through specs and things of that nature is there turnaround time for when we can expect to hear back?
So, so we actually do, and I probably didn't answer this earlier with Board Member Struthers, is we do have an additional, additional air purifiers available in the warehouse. We recently just ordered 250 more. Those are the current ones we use. That if, if you've walked into a school, they've got the kind of large white ones and reason why we chose those is because the, the average square footage of a classroom is, is a thousand foot. And those are regulated to provide those air changes in those spaces. So we do have some. What you specifically were talking about was a community member just really brought it to our attention is, is something called a box fan purifier.
Right, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, I'm only, I can only speak from what I know to this point. We, we actually sat down and talked about it yesterday, because we were looking at the cost effectiveness. If they, you know, truly provide what, when they need to provide, it's an option that we may be able to go to. But what we do know is that with any system, you know, we've, we've introduced MERV 13s. We've put in, as, as I said on the slide, over 95,000, which we're going to be changing quarterly. But the thing about, and I know I'm taking a little time, I'm sorry, but the thing about filters are dependent on the system. You know, we may have to change certain ones more regularly because of filters get full, they get clogged, they need to be changed. So although we are on a quarterly change out, we're still monitoring those. With those box fans, if we put them in every room, they're really, if you look at, you're just stacked MERV 13 filters with a fan that sucks the air in through it and, and circulate. So we're looking into it and we'll get back to you. It's definitely something that we, that we may be able to do if it's number one, safe and number two, cost effective as to what we already have.
Well, appreciate it. Is there, I know you say you, you have extra air, air principals or, or billing managers would like to request additional air purification or air purifiers to stack? Is there a process? Or I guess in general, just dealing with PPE, can you really, can you speak really quickly? Just for the public's sake about the process of how they order additional PPE?
Yeah, well, in terms of the additional PPE, we have, we have stocked our warehouse. So, so schools can go through the regular purchasing process and, and really it's just requesting from our warehouse for your standard PPE, whether it be masks, gloves, you know, sanitizer, those type of things. We keep those stocked. For, for the bigger items such as air purifier, it's more than just requesting it. We have to make sure that there's a need because the, the, the cost of, of those items are such where we just can't, you know, put them out there where they're truly not needed. So we want to make sure that we place them in the areas there's a true need. But if there's a building supervisor and a principal who believe that one is needed, we will assess it and we will deliver it if necessary.
So it might, so it might be as simple as an email to get that conversation started.
Yes, an email or.
Sound script.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. Secondly, the PPE form that I see that principals or building managers have had to use, they do not have a line item for children's size masks for our babies essentially. Is there, should that be added to that form? Or is there a special way that they request smaller masks for smaller students?
I'm not exactly what sure, what, what form you're looking at in terms of a physical form, but within our Oracle system and our ordering process, we do have student masks and we have them over.
So through Oracle, so through Oracle. Okay, gotcha. Ms. Berkeley, how much time do I have left?
One minute.
Okay. I'll come, I guess I'll, I'll circle back around to the second part, but Dr. Zuckerman, just something to think on, since I only got a minute left. On regards to the virtual learning environment and making it as effective as possible for our students, are there essentially training programs for teaching educators to learn how to integrate technology into lesson plan of the curriculum? So not necessarily training that teaches them how to use a program or application, but instead methods for things like developing project-based learning units or evaluating technologies effectiveness. And I know I'm almost out of time, but that's something you can think about, that's something that we can talk about. I just want to put that out there for you to consider.
Great, thanks. I look forward to following up and, and we can collaborate on that with Dr. White as well and, and explore that further. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I'm, I'm done, Madam Chair.
Thanks. 10 seconds left. Okay, next is Board Member Valentine.
I'd like to reclaim Board Member Harris's 10 seconds and it's zero. Minute and a half. Just want to reclaim that. Quickly, again, thank you everyone for the presentation. I'll, I will be quick with my questions. Hopefully you'll be quickly with, quick with your answers. One in particular around testing. I've been getting questions from constituents around random testing of students around the country and whether we have a system, as a system would do that, students who may not be having symptoms as a health precaution. Is that something that we are thinking about doing or prepared to do? So random testing of students to declare whether students have the virus without actually showing symptoms?
We've been in discussions with our team for about two weeks now. There are lots of factors that go into that play. Right now, we're still finalizing the testing of staff and that information had to be in the system and to us by when Wednesday of this week. So once we have reviewed all of the provisions, found a vendor who can do that and have gotten approval from the health department, of course, you'll be the first to know when we are able to move toward that and then we will alert our community.
Thank you. Second question I think is, is sort of to my colleague Harris's point around the seventh or 12th grade virtual option. We've been getting emails from, from constituents asking, you know, whether that's an option. Obviously, the, the K through six option got a lot of attention because of the number of students under 12 that don't have the vaccine. And then teachers and schools really coming back out and asking teachers to sign up. How are we sort of advertising for, what was that, what would the seven through 12 virtual option look like? For those who were interested in that adoption?
So the, the program is, is going to be very, very different than K through six. K, K through six is going to be similar to what we had last year in the sense that it's largely synchronous instruction conducted via Zoom or Google Meet. The, and, and so that's why it's really a temporary, short-term program until the vaccine is available. The seven through 12, we're taking it in a very different direction. Much more of to Mr. Harris's point, project-based, much more independent, small group, personalized learning for students, interest-driven, asynchronous, but asynchronous with teacher guidance. And so that's, that's what the, the program overall will, will be based around. In year one, the, the electives offerings are going to be relatively limited to what you might find in a comprehensive high school. But as we build out over time, our goal is to expand those possibilities. So I, I think we just are looking at very two different models of, of instruction. We're excited to innovate, excited to, to learn from this year and then build out from it.
But that is currently an option for, for parents who don't want to send their children back who are in grades seven through 12, right?
So unfortunately, no, because that program at this point, we've reached capacity for it. And because, in large part, because it is designed to do the type of long-term redesign of education as we know it and we think of it. For short-term possibilities for students to grade seven through 12, we have, we have some limited options at the high school. We have our evening virtual program, for example, that's available to families. And if there are medical concerns on the part of families, then, then we are asking parents to request home and hospital services, which is a medical documentation process. And there is a virtual component to that. But that's going to be very different from the online campus and also different from our K through six program. That'll be a, a process which parents would, would apply for. And, and that's available at each school.
Okay. And my last question, it's you, Dr. Golson. There's something in business called second mover advantage. The idea that when you go second, you actually can learn from what happens with those who go first and maybe build off of some of the lessons learned. We've seen some systems open already in Maryland. What are some of the lessons that you're seeing from some of the opening? I have colleagues in Montgomery County whose classrooms are already being quarantined because of students who have been exposed. Can you give us a feel for what, what your team has learned over the last few days as schools have been open? But also what parents could expect if we do find a positive case in one of our classrooms?
The best lesson right now for 12 and older is to get the vaccination. While I understand it does not completely cover you for COVID, it is a major factor around helping to ensure that you are not spreading COVID and that the mask must be worn at all times. In my conversations with other colleagues, that has been a key function and point that they have all made and we will continue to have those discussions. And mainly really right now, the discussion is around athletes. Because we're finding that there is a quicker spread amongst athletes. And what parents can expect is that there'll be notifications around any child who's out in COVID or who in our buildings and anyone who's been in contact with their child, there'll be notification to those parents. We will post the information as Ms. Hill shared in the presentation. And if necessary, based on whether they're quarantined, whether they have vaccination or not determines the type of quarantine that they experience. All of that information is in our reopening guide, our instructional guide that Tyra referenced, that's on our webpage.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Next, we will have Board Member Boozer Struthers. I hope I can turn this chime off.
Madam Chair, I just pointed out clarification. We have two board members that you may not see in your, on your screen.
Let me ask this question, excuse me. I had asked earlier, when the name, the hands go up, I was told that, that, the, the person in my upper left-hand corner would be next and then I would go that way, but it's not happening that way for me. So colleagues, I apologize because that was the instruction I was given. So I'm looking at the list as the hands go up and I see that Adam Stafford's name would be first. So i- is that the correct order?
Correct. And if you'd like, I can assist if you'd like.
I appreciate it. Well then, let me, let me make, because maybe I need to keep the participants list up. I see Adam Stafford, Thomas, Boozer Struthers and Williams. Is that the correct order?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Then I won't go by the, the screenshots. I'll go by what's on this participants list.
And Madam, Dr. Miller and first round and second round, because I think some of it may be second round for people.
Uh, okay.
You will need the assistance of Ms. Berkeley for those that have already participated in the first round. So when Dr. Miller calls them, if they have already participated in the first round, please let us know. Thank you.
Let us know.
Okay, Ms. Stafford, Adam Stafford, you had, didn't you speak during the first round?
No.
Not, not on this. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, I wanted to thank Dr. Golson and her team for the presentation. And I wanted to just get some clarity on a few questions that I had here that I have received from community members throughout the, the past several weeks. So I would like to know if there could be some guidance on the website for students that are under the stay-at-home directive? As it stands right now, I don't see that there. So this, I'm wondering if, if that's something that could be possible. Also, the protocol for when a student or a staff member gets COVID and if they, if our, is our staff being trained in confidential reporting of, you know, possible exposure? So that's question number two. And then I, I wanted to sort of reiterate what my colleague, Board Member Valentine, mentioned about preventative testing. You know, the CDC has just released some information stating that, you know, finding the virus early is very important to reducing the spread and regular testing for students, especially being that, having that notification if their child tests positive can really help with planning for treatment and protecting the rest of their family. And, you know, I'm seeing across the nation, school systems going completely virtual and just talking to parents that are just absolutely terrified about sending their students to school. You know, just with the exposure, especially for our students K through six. And so I wanted to see, you know, what are the discussions happening around, you know, pooling testing versus random testing versus, you know, weekly testing? I, I would just like to know more specifics on where we are in terms of preventative testing.
As I just shared, we've been in conversations for two weeks. We just had this conversation again Tuesday afternoon for three hours. So once we have finalized and spoken to the health officials and found a vendor to assist us, then we will, I will come back and share that information with board members first before we go to community. I do not want to begin a conversation and be very extremely premature around information and we not end up going in the direction that we may talk about tonight. So we are clearly working through it. I will share information as we get closer to finalizing.
I guess I'd just like to know, are we looking at testing for all students or students that are unvaccinated? And the, the frequency and type, I think that, that's a key thing that would really.
The only school, the only school district in the country who is doing all students is LA Unified. Already had a conversation with them and they would not recommend that for any school district, not even themselves.
Six.
So we are looking at a small, a random sample group. And the type of testing we will be, and we are continuing to have conversations with our health department.
Okay, so for the other two questions, maybe this is more for Mr. Zuckerberg regarding the website in terms of the, the information on the directive for students that are under the stay-at-home directive and then, you know, can the protocol be posted there for what happens when a student and staff member or staff member gets COVID?
Can you, can you clarify what you mean a stay-at-home order?
Yes, so for example, if a student contracts COVID and they're
Oh, okay.
required to quarantine or their classes.
Dr. Libby, can you speak on that? Because it's in the background.
So if a student has contracts COVID or has to quarantine for close contact, the teacher will provide either work packets or they will have online learning. So it would depend on the, if it's one student or the entire class, but they will get some direction from their teacher. And then in terms of the protocol for staff, yes, the information is confidential. And the school nurses are, have already trained and they've been working on that since we opened up in hybrid in terms of any individual who, who tests positive for COVID.
I guess I'm asking if the protocol and then also the, the instructions for students also be placed on the website so that that information is really available for parents? And then also, oh, is it, is there a possibility for us to, you know, expand our dashboard to include positive cases at each school so that people can look and see, you know, where their school stands in terms of positive cases? I know it's saying generally if a school has, you know, been, an area has been closed, but.
Board Member Adam Stafford, we can certainly put that information on the website. But I, I think it would be more helpful to have it on school webpages in addition to the PGCPs homepage, but it's not a problem. Add it to the website.
And quickly, the staff information is in the guide, posted in the staff portal.
I guess I'm just asking for it to be, you know, very like clearly stated on the website so that people can, okay, this is what happens if my child has it. This is what, these are the steps. Or this is what happens when a teacher gets it, just so that it's very clear for parents.
Thank you, Board Member Stafford. Our next question will come from Board Member Thomas. Did he disappear?
Right here. Yeah, so just a couple of questions. I think these will go to Dr. Fawcett. And good evening, sir. So I know we've had some issues in the past with the app. I, I recognize we are using a different app, if I'm not mistaken. But I know one of the issues that we had in years past was that the, the, the app and the bus locations were not being updated in live, real-time. And when I reached out to follow up on this, it was due to the fact that there was a shortage, which we currently have. And that as a result of the shortage, the person whose job it was to man the app in real-time was being required to, to, to drive a bus and was therefore not able to update the app. So I just, my, my question is, are there any measures in place to ensure that this app will function? You know, at, at, at the, at the, the level that it is expected to?
Yeah, so part, part of that, part of that issue, Board Member Thomas, was that the app was tied to the physical bus itself. With our new system, the bus is actually tied to a mobile device. So all of our, all of our buses have been, have been given. So all of our, all of our buses have been, have been given um, iPads or or, or the type of mobile device that, that um, that you're able to put on the bus. So what happens now, so uh, what you're talking about is we could have had, if, if the app was tied to a bus and uh, that bus sat or another bus had to make the run, you didn't get real information. What the bus drivers are able to do now, if they're substituting for a run, they're able to punch that bus number in that they're substituting for the Dublin back four, which is going to give the parents real time information. So that bus and, and those bus, those, those laptops or those iPads, I'm sorry, are portable. So there'll be transmission. So each bus driver has that capability now to put the bus route in that they're running. So they'll get live information, should be accurate.
Thank you.
Great. So it sounds like it's essentially kind of an automated way of being able to update the location as opposed to before. Um, thank you. And I know that we, I know that there is a nationwide shortage of bus drivers. I recognize that we've probably done, taken some actions on our part. I do want to know what specifically we've done to recruit or attract more bus drivers. Um, if there's anything specific that we have done to be able to uh, meet, meet the, meet the gap that we have?
Sure, I can, I can take that question. So we really partner with the Prince George's County Government at their job fairs. Um, we've had community constituents that have had job fairs, so we reach out to those. At one point, we actually were advertising at the motor vehicles um, and throughout the um, in Prince George's County as well as Anarundel County. So we did not find that we yielded a lot of candidates from that, but we've also posted previously um, in malls. But due to COVID, some of the things that we've done on the outside, we haven't been able to really keep up with that. So right now for this past year, it's really been more of being brand ambassadors and through the various events that happen um, throughout our community and going out and asking them to come as well as um, through uh, working with communications and advertising on um, any chance that we get through the post and other news outlets.
Yeah, I, thank you, Dr. Murphy. I recognize that it, it's probably an incredible challenge to, to recruit more bus drivers. Um, the last question is really kind of a follow up to something that Ms. Ahmed mentioned. Um, was, which was talking about perhaps incentivizing um, more families that um, will be transporting their kids to school in, in, in um, instead of using the bus. And so I know that she offered it as a suggestion. I'm curious to know, is this actually a possibility? If so, I know that this might just be coming on the flying, may not have the exact ideas. But what could that actually look like? Because I think any opportunity we have to be able to solve our transportation challenges and gaps are, are, are important.
Again, I can, I can tell you, uh, Board Member Thomas, that, that we have talked about it, but there, there are a lot of things that go into it. Uh, once again, it, it would help and support us if we're able to reduce the number of routes that we run. If the bus still, if, if the bus still has to run the same route, if we don't have a conglomerate of parents who are able to remove that route, then we're, we're spending um, dollars twice. We would be incentivizing that parent, but we would also still be running that route, which wouldn't necessarily cure our, our on-time situation. So we're, we're not, we're not throwing anything away. I think one thing that we proved as a school system, as we, we've been open to try anything in terms of whether it's recruitment or retaining bus drivers, and we will continue to do so. But we, we haven't shut the door on it. We'll look at it and there's an opportunity for us to let it go.
Thank you. Our Board Member Boozer Struthers.
Round two. Yeah, thank you. Um, uh, get, going back to some academic questions. One area that I don't think we've heard too much about and, and is the instrumental and choral education, which did have a lot of concerns around COVID spread when we were in hybrid and certainly like athletics, there are certainly stories from other school systems. What will be our um, approach to, to instrumental and choral? And will there be the instrument PPE that, that I've read about that, that it's available?
Hi, yes, thank you for that question. We will have um, PPE specific to our instruments. And we'll be making sure that those classes are spaced out, that there um, is the correct CDC guidance and distance in classrooms. Um, I'll cycle back on chorus because I, I want to say they have mask on, but I need to just cycle back to that. But for our instruments, we have specific PPE that fits over instruments so that when they're blowing into them, especially those that are wind instruments, that they're not blowing into the air. And then we have built into all of those uh, creative arts, even our dance opportunities for all the equipment to be cleaned in between, so that the, the instructors and teachers have been trained in how to make sure that's happening. They're also trained on how to separate their classrooms. They've had training this week on what those classrooms need to look like when students enter. So they're giving each other enough space in order to implement the instruction.
Okay, great. And I did see in the reopening plan, the purchase of additional instruments. And I just want to uh, thank administration for that priority. Um, another question is around the tutoring programs and the opportunity for in-person. Um, again, uh, many of, there's wonderful opportunities online, but there are many students that is just not working. And of course, they, they need this support in person. Are we, are we allowed, are there third party organizations and others who will be approved to come into our buildings uh, around the COVID protocols and, and how that might work with any of the in, in-person tutoring?
Yeah, so our first um, effort would be to utilize our own staff in our in-person programs. And we will have some, and they will be linked directly to learning loss first. Um, and our schools will assist us in identifying who those students are. We've had an opportunity through S R funds to ensure that we have plenty of tutoring opportunities. The same way we've discussed staff here and discussed our own process for vaccinations. You would understand that contractors coming into our systems, we'd have to follow the exact same protocol. So it's going to always be best for us to utilize our staff because we have that, we don't have to chase it through. And we want to really in this first semester, monitor the amount of staff coming from outside of our buildings into our buildings. But will we have tutoring available? Yes. Will there be some that are virtual? Yes. And will there be some that are in person? Absolutely.
All right, great. Thank you so much. And I just want to uh, give a big thank you to everyone for the opening plan and your report this evening.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer Struthers. Next is uh, Board, uh, Vice Chair Sonia Williams.
Uh, before I proceed, um, the parliamentarian has his hand up and I'm quite sure it's not for a question to the staff.
Well, it's, I don't know what your custom is. You're recognizing people in the order they put their hands up, but some people are speaking for the second time. Mr. Murray put his hand up late, but he hadn't had an opportunity to speak for the first time yet. Mr. Burrows put his hand up late, he hadn't had an opportunity to speak for the first time yet. And some people are speaking for the second time. If that's your custom, fine. So.
Well, the only person speaking for the first uh, second round was uh, that I see is the Board Member Valentine.
Well, Boozer Struthers spoke twice and then Valentine would speak twice. And again, they would both speak for the second time before Murray and Burrows would get an opportunity to speak. Well, if that's your custom, that's your custom.
No, it's not a custom. Just because we've done it doesn't mean it's right. So if it's, if it's, if we want to do things in order, then I would like for you to bring that to, I'm glad that you've brought that to our attention.
Well, I'm taking notes. So people put their hands up for the second time, they need to go to the end of the list. That's the way you know.
Correct, correct. So with that being said, Board Member Williams, uh, this will be your first round.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, my uh, question, well, first I'd like to have a comment. Um, it's around, I just want to tell Dr. Golson and since all the staff are here, I appreciate all the work that has gone into keeping the school system running from April or March twenty twenty. We pivoted into virtual learning, I think the quickest in this, in this region. And that is because of all of the dedicated work that you all did. And, and I just want to say, I appreciate you all for this work and for creating this amazing plan to open our schools and have kids come back into the building, along with having this, this new virtual opportunity for students who excelled in the virtual learning. So I appreciate that. And although I know it was really a, a lot of challenges during that period, we gained a lot through this COVID uh, virtual learning process. And the biggest thing is that we have become a one-to-one school system and we're getting better every day with using that equipment. And so um, something that I really haven't heard about, and I know that parents have asked me about this, is with weather events and the use of um, the devices that we have, what information can you share with us today to prepare parents for what we can expect as the weather gets bad?
We truly are a one-to-one school district. So a great example would be, um, even if we had were very similar to Frederick County where they had to close today due to the tornado and the effects. If our community would have had access to electricity and wifi, we still would have been able to hold school while those students were at home, which means that, that avoids our ability to add days at the end of the school year. So for PGCPs, we're already starting later than everyone, um, other than Anarundel in this area. So for us to continue to analyze that if we were to have a snowmageddon like we did many years ago, we'd have the ability to continue with instruction at home. So I know many of our staff members um, are open to that because they don't, our teachers don't want to add those days at the end of the year. And our parents, for just since the kids are already home, they should go ahead and continue to learn. Um, so we will see how this um, this year plays out for weather, but we have the capability to go one-to-one for the entire district, go virtually.
Thank you so much for that. And the other advantage that I think that we've gained from this is the opportunity for students to cross-pollinate into schools in those after-school clubs. There's some schools that offer some after, after-school clubs that other schools do not. For example, if there is a, a school that's um, discussing environment, the environment, and another school doesn't have that. Um, is it possible that we can looking, look into having opportunities where kids can participate in something that they're interested in? And I, I don't mean where you have to physically be there, but let's say as a debate club or someone is talking about language or whatever. Um, if they can cross-pollinate and have the ability to participate in another school virtually, I think it would be um, to the advantage of some students. And so I just ask that um, that we look into that ability if it is possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Williams. Uh, now, uh, Board Member David Murray. And this is five minutes, this is your first round.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Um, I want to start off by thanking staff um, for including the science of reading the presentation tonight. Um, that's something you know that I'm extremely passionate about, that I think is going to pay absolutely massive dividends um, for our students in our school district. If we implement it correctly, I wanted to thank Dr. White, Trinell Bowman, Smo McQuage, Takisha Ubiera, um, and Valerie Urban as well, um, for serving on our work group. Um, it's just truly critical work. And so I was really excited um, to see that included tonight. Uh, I wanted to follow up on the tutoring um, that was mentioned. Where can I find information online about the scope of it? How many students are being served? What are the vendors being used?
So we can pull that together for you. We can at least pull together the plan for you. Uh, we won't know the exact number of students. We can guess. And so we get into the school year and we realize and look at learning loss. And start looking at um, our data from the beginning of the year, where we can absolutely pull together the plan that we put together, we put in for the funds for the programs.
Great. Thank you, Dr. White. Um, cause I think the implementation of that um, is absolutely critical, making sure that we're, we're really um, maximizing the gains for our students there. And my last comments are about testing. Um, colleagues at my school in DC, we have um, testing for all students and teachers um, every single week. Uh, we started back this week and as a result, at both of our campuses, we had some positive cases. Um, but as a result of our um, frequent required testing, we were able to find those cases right away, quarantine those students um, and really avert a bigger issue. I think that um, with the amount of COVID cases there are in our community, it's inevitable that, that COVID is going to come into the majority of our schools. And as such, um, I think that it's imperative that we have some sort of testing program um, that is regular, that is um, big enough um, to, to be statistically significant. And um, it's something that, that I'd like to see action on. I mean, as we know, school is about to open. Um, I know that we're in the planning stages, but really um, we need a concrete plan as soon as possible. Um, otherwise, I think, you know, we're really setting ourselves up for some, so much bigger outbreaks than um, than need be. So that, that, that's um, the rest of my comments.
That, that's it. Thank you. Uh, Board Member Burrows was that, this is his first round.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Murray for uh, raising the learning loss uh, concern. Could I, I'm not sure who the appropriate person is on staff. Um, it, could you just describe what the learning loss uh, plan is for some of the students? I heard a little bit about it during the presentation. I heard some about it, some of it with, with Mr. Murray, but um, I, I still like greater clarity on that.
Sure, I'll, I'll start. Um, so as our students enter in, one of the things you probably heard me mention is that we'll have the bridging guides that will start out. And the reason that that's important for all of our teachers is because we want to level set foundational skills that our students will need at the very beginning. Those that um, from the courses that they were in previously, especially in core content, to those they're heading into, just to reset foundation, reset expectations, really bring students back in, in a um, emotional support way and to cultivate just re-establishing practices in the classroom. And we've also im- implemented on Wednesdays for our elementaries, but our middle and high school teachers, because they have A V schedules, will pick certain dates where we will, we're calling it work on Wednesday, Wednesdays, where we have an opportunity to really look at student data, to really have student conferencing with our students, for them to understand their own data, for them to uh, really see right away where we have deficits and to make sure that we're addressing those. And those ways will get addressed by, you know, several opportunities in the classroom. So in our curriculums, we've put a lot of group work in. Now we have our devices. We have an opportunity to work with students one-on-one, whole group and allowing students to go back and focus on skills that they need, as well as being taught the skills that we have to move forward with. Uh, with this whole entire team knows is that at the end of the day, if you're in third grade, you're going to have to be um, exposed to third grade standards. So there's this way where we have to go back and identify ways to catch you up while still teaching you at the same time. So differentiation in our classrooms becomes very relevant. It's something that we will train our teachers on continually. And uh, one of the board members, you mentioned uh, the collaboration of using our devices, not just for a tool, but how do we implement and integrate where students have an opportunity to put, bridge in those digital resources and those interventions throughout our curriculum so that they have ti- time on their own to work through it while teachers are teaching the whole group or working in smaller groups. So we, we really have to be methodical and very intentional about who's sitting before our teachers every single day. When we teach, are we using exit tickets and ways to identify where they're stuck? And then how do we go back and reteach? And so our collaborative planning processes, um, our opportunities on, you've heard me mention reflection and assessment, it's going to be an ongoing conversation. And I, and I'll just say, we've partnered very well with our school side. Dr. Coley, um, make sure that even in our stat days, we have times when we stop and we look at where our students are. And we address how we go for it. And our, our curriculum supervisors, when they meet with their teachers each quarter, they talk about ways to do that. And, and a lot of our standards spiral through. So it's not a one time you get it, but we have standards that really spiral through for the whole year. So we are on it. Um, Board Member Burrows really trying to find ways to help our teachers identify those things from the beginning and to work with our students to catch them up.
I think, I appreciate that. A lot of that sounds um, uh, great, some hype that we're doing it. It, it also sounds like things that are, should be routinely done and things that we've done in the past. Uh, I guess when, when I, when I think about the extraordinary situation that we're in with learning loss like we could have never predicted. Uh, I guess I was looking to hear more of, are we gonna, for those students that are two, three grade levels behind, are we gonna extend the school day for them? Is every, is every, are we going to provide a tutor for every child in that situation? Are we going to have Saturday school? Opportunities for those students, you know, what, I guess what additional um, support, uh, you know, you know, if you have a creator who's two grade levels behind. And we have some students who were behind before the pandemic. Pandemic has only made it worse. And not just Prince George's County public schools, but across, right? So I, I guess I'm trying to figure out what additional tools, what will students and parents have to catch their students up?
Absolutely. And when I share the document that I'll pull together for Board Member Murray, you'll be able, you'll have an opportunity to see what those are. Um, we've tried to be really creative in the different ways that we're going to address students. And those students will be identified by learning loss, as well as platforms where we're trying to utilize twenty-four seven tutoring. So even if you're not experiencing learning loss, we are working on a platform right now that you could be home and you're just not So even if you're not experiencing learning loss, we are working on a platform right now that you could be home and you're just not with your teacher and you need help. And so we have to think about every child, and not only those who have learning loss. We have to think about even the other end, our tax students, our students who are extended, to make sure that wherever a child is and where they're stuck, that we're providing those opportunities for them. So I will gather that information for you. And then if you have additional questions, once you see it, just let us know.
Thank you. Those are your five-minute Board Member Burrows. Now we're going to the second round. I'm looking at the hour. It's nine thirteen, and we haven't gone to capital improvement. So if we can make our questions such that the CEO and staff members can get back to us, take our questions and get back to us, but that's up to you colleagues. So I'm going to, this is the second round, and I'll start with Board Member Valentine.
I'll be I'll be really quick. As far as sports, I just realized that at least for our fall football game, there's a capacity number. I just saw that Wise High School's football game was sold out, but there's a number, a limited number of students, people who can get into the game. So just understand that for those who are folks who frequent fall sports. Other point I wanted to recommend is, as you all engage with some of our higher education partners, particularly Dr. Coley, for our high schools that have students who may potentially have to move around. But I'm hearing that some universities are putting QR codes in classrooms and in behind certain chairs. So you and students kind of check in so we know where they are if you want to do contact tracing. And lastly, I think to a colleague, Mr. Thomas's point around busing, Mrs. Zuckerman, I think this idea of the future of schools and that this idea of a hybrid every other day type of model where we don't need as many bus drivers, that we're using technology that we're sort of capitalizing on what we've learned over the last year is a way to, you know, really address the bus shortage, which I think long term, I don't think is going to go away. But also one that we could use technology to really minimize the size of schools and members who are going in the building every day. But this is a future of school conversation I think we can be having now as we're building all these new schools and we're thinking about the future of technology, but also the integrated idea of school busing. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Valentine. Next second, this is the second round. Board Member Thomas.
Yeah, thank you. Just one more follow-up question. And that question is in regards to a parent who reached out with some concerns. They have a child that is under twelve and that will be doing the virtual learning because they cannot get vaccinated. They also have an elder child who is going to be going in person. And now they are wishing that there was an option for their elder child to be virtual as well. I recognize that this is a challenging situation, but is there anything that we can do for families like this? Because it essentially defeats the purpose of being able to keep child A at home if child B has to go to school, and there's no real way to keep them apart from each other at home. So, you know, is there any kind of accommodation that can be made for families in this predicament? That's my question.
So it would depend on what grade the older students in, the students in high school. There is an evening virtual option at each each of our high schools. If the student's not in high school and the younger sibling has a medical condition, certainly we can look at home and hospital services. It'd be very unusual for the older student, and we'd have to. That would be that would be a tricky one, just because it's not the student themselves, themselves, who is who is dealing with the condition. But there's so many examples of what you just described, which is which is what logistically makes it so challenging at scale. So that's why we would have to look at it on a case-by-case basis through those two possibilities.
And then the last option.
Thank you, Mr. Zuckerman.
The other option is homeschooling.
Okay, thank you. That is three minutes for Board Member Valentine, second round. Board Member Adam Stafford, three minutes.
Okay, thank you again. I just wanted to come back to the topic of testing again and just really underscore how important this is for us to reduce the risk of transmission, especially for our younger students. And I think that preventative measure will really help us to prevent outbreaks and make sure that parents, families make informed decisions, as well as our staff. So I wanted to make a motion. I wanted to just move that the administration provides the board with a preventative testing measure that would be administered on an opt-in basis for our K through six students with regular frequency. I would recommend weekly. And so it can take whatever form makes sense, but I'm asking that, you know, we have something like that happening sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Are we taking motions? This is, I thought this was just a work session and making suggestions and asking questions. I didn't know we were doing any voting during this session, these work sessions.
Madam Chair, that would be up to your discretion. Normally, you got to ask the chair if she's going to entertain a motion at this point in time.
Well.
I'll ask, I mean, I think that this is probably the most important issue that
Can I make this statement when she's not close?
That we're talking about this evening, talking about knowledge of students having an asymptomatic disease, the concept of testing students after they show symptoms. It's quite frankly, it's it's it's, I think that this is something that we can get ahead of. I'm encouraged to hear that the administration is researching this, but I'm just thinking that we need to set some parameters that, you know, we're ensuring that we're focusing on students that are the most vulnerable, which are students that cannot be vaccinated and that this is happening frequently. And so, Madam Chair, I'm asking if we can take a motion on this, given the urgency of this situation.
Before we take, before I entertain a motion, Dr. Golson had her hand up to respond to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So let me please reiterate, as I've shared several times tonight. Our team has been in discussion about students K to twelve, not just K to six, around testing of asymptomatic students and finding the best way to do that. As it may always appear as if I quickly made a decision, but it takes a lot of research, both for health, for our medical practitioners, and legal. We have one hundred and thirty-six thousand students. I am definitely going to make a decision around testing. There won't need to be a motion. That's the advantage of having a CEO who puts a lot of time and thought into making decisions that will ultimately help to support our community and our families. You've allowed me to do that throughout this pandemic, and so does House Bill eleven oh seven, which allows me to function and operate and make decisions around the day-to-day functions of the school district. I ask that once again, you continue to trust my decision-making as we are moving through this pandemic. As always, I'll provide you the information first and then our community second.
Thank you. With that being said, I will not entertain a motion at this time. I wanted to move this meeting on and forward. And please take note, Dr. Golson, of the concern that brought out Stafford, the point that Board Adam Stafford made in reference to the urgency. And I'm sure and confident that you will get back to board members relative to the next steps for addressing the concerned, well, all of the concerns that have been expressed this this evening. With that, we're into the second round, and Board Member Queen.
Thank you so very much, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to again thank staff and thank Dr. Golson and just no board member and staffer that I even brought this to Dr. Golson's attention, that a Senator, Senator Rosenpass approached me at Mako, and he wanted the kids to be tested. So we've already talked about that. And he requested some of the same things that you guys are bringing up tonight. So I know Dr. Golson and her staff has really been working on this because it has already, and she even told me, look, I've already talked to them. They already know. So I don't, I don't believe that she's going to overlook this. I do believe that they're working to make the best decision possible when it comes to our students. I just want to say real quick that this is the first time I have not heard us talk about safety and security, which is so, so funny to me when our school system normally did questions about security, about safety of our students. And I'm really concerned, and it's not no joke, when we got kids who's bringing computers back and forth to school that's walking one and a half mile, a little bit over one and a half mile, walking on highways. And we haven't addressed without a bus, especially our younger kids, and we haven't talked a little bit more about security. I didn't hear anything about the safety and security of it.
While we make a response, Miss Board Member Queen.
Yeah, yeah.
While we are
I'm sorry, because I heard nothing on security or safety.
While we're a one-to-one district, what is important now that we're one-to-one, but it is important to know is that we had several schools where students were already transporting laptops back and forth. We have insurance on all those devices. And we have very limited cases where there was actually theft. We have more damage of laptops than we had of theft. I could name several schools, Buck Lodge, Fairmont Heights, Oxen Hill, Tallahassee, just to name a few of those that were one-to-one and have been for several years. So we'll continue to monitor. And the great thing is, is all of our laptops have a secure device that you can't access that device. Once you acquired it, you can't use it without a PGCPs email address. So it's of no value to anyone on the street.
Okay, thank you so very much. I'm just worried about the safety and security of our babies. Once I know that the schools you named are high schools, but I'm really talking about our elementary school kids that we may be looking a little bit more security as they walk the streets back and forth to school. And I always say to the community, please, we need you to join in on keeping a lookout at our kids, our scholars. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. Were you expecting a response to that? Okay, last but not least, and this is the second round for Board Member Burrows.
I just want to publicly thank Ms. Adam Stafford for raising the issue of testing. I'm receiving emails from my former teachers who are legitimately afraid, from parents who are legitimately afraid. We all want to be safe. That's the goal for everyone. So it's not a to to push this issue. It's it's a worthy issue that we need to collaborate around. The reality is, students go back next week. So I'm getting the same calls that I'm sure many of my colleagues are getting around testing. And that was the intention of Ms. Adam Stafford, and I want to say that and thank you for raising it. I look forward to a decision being made and communicated with the board and the public because there's not a day that goes by that I'm not getting correspondence from people who are legitimately fearful, te- teachers with pre-existing conditions, students with issues. I was a, I guess I'm a COVID survivor myself, and for a large part of that, I was asymptomatic. And I could have been running it left and right without even knowing. And so that's what Ms. Adam Stafford was attempting to raise, and I appreciate that. I I do want to ask to get some clarity on the mental health plan for our students. I know that child abuse numbers were down nationally because a lot of our students were not in front of mandatory reporters. We know that domestic violence was up during the pandemic, and a lot of our young people were at home witnessing that. We know that young people have mental health issues already outside of the pandemic, but the stresses of domestic violence and the stresses of unemployment being so high, our young people are coming in to the school system at a place where they're going to need, you know, significant mental health support. And so I would just like some additional information around around that.
Are you asking for a response now or?
Yes, yes.
Be back after, was from the appropriate staff member. Because I I thought it was Dr. Coley that talked about mental health.
Yes.
Am I correct?
That's correct. So are you asking that I proceed or wait?
I'm asking that you respond, you know.
Yeah, thirty-five seconds.
Okay, there are several categories that our mental health clinicians, they're quite experts, and they they have a a listing of all kinds of supports that they can provide to our students and their families. Specifically, they are able to provide professional learning for the staff so that they can recognize triggers with our students and provide the support and provide the appropriate documentation to staff members in requesting support for those students and their families. So just as you've raised many areas of concern, we have adopted a partnership with our our mental health clinicians where they are able to recognize some of those symptoms that exist with our students and their families. So when we talk about support, the support will be specific to what has been observed by the classroom teacher and what has been observed by the principals and leaders of the building as well. So there's just not one particular area that the mental health support is providing, Mr. Burrows. There are several supports that they are providing to students and their families. I can certainly provide additional information at a later date so that you have the listing of all the supports that our clinicians are providing to our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Coley. With that, this will conclude the discussion on the reopening of Prince George's County Public Schools. We're going to move now to the capital, the two thousand twenty, FY two thousand twenty-three, twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program. Dr. Golson, would you please introduce four point two, please?
Yes, thank you. At this time, I will have Mr. Shawn Matlock, Sheila Taylor, and Elizabeth Chazan do our presentation for our FY two thousand twenty-three through FY two thousand twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program.
And before we start, a Board Member, Vice Chair, I have to leave for a minute. Would you take take over? Board Member Williams?
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Thank you. And Kim, Board Staff, please put that PowerPoint up, and thank you all for the presentation earlier.
Good evening. Well, as soon as we get the PowerPoint up, we'll start the presentation. So again, good evening, Board Members, Chairman, Vice Chairperson, and rest of the board members. Here, Shawn Matlock, Director of Capital Programs, to start you up, to give you, walk you through our FY twenty-three, twenty-eight CIP program, our our plan. So we're going to break this up into three pieces. We're going to have what we did do, a year review of our program management, what was funded for FY twenty-two, which just clicked on for our, in July first, for our our current budget, and then what's being requested for the FY twenty-three year, our proposed capital budget. On the next slide, please. So here's our our year-end review, if you go onto the next slide. So we had a hundred and thirty-three projects that were finished and are occupied, or basically substantial completion this year. We had forty-three projects that met the requirements to be a hundred percent closed out, final completion, that's financially closed out. A hundred and twenty-plus projects with capital funds are ongoing this summer. And we and we see six of our projects receive state funding award this year. Can you move on to the next slide? So, oh, sorry, go back. One more. So we have, too far. But over six hundred and eighty active projects by our account. And that's at various stages between design and final completion and then constructions. A general breakdown, as you can see, we we find a lot of things that are not directly capital, like abatement, ADA upgrades and things like that. Could you move to the next slide, please? And the highlights of our summer capital program, again, these are the the types of projects that we have. We have abatement projects that we're we're funding, ADA upgrades, building repairs, major emergencies, building repairs that are minor code corrections, exterior window door upgrades, IT upgrades. And a lot of our projects that are not specific for window and door upgrades have them as added portion to the project. They had kitchen and food service remodels, new schools, and modernization for those moving. There are parking lots that that are being repaved and worked on, playgrounds. We have one of the career academies working. We have four electrical upgrades, fourteen HVAC upgrades, and seven life safety upgrades. Could you move to the next slide, please? So we also had one major project that is in in under construction right now is the new Cherokee Lane Elementary School replacement. We are right now Um, we, uh, are right now, um, uh, it's being, uh, uh, disassembled in its off-site location and will be reassembled, uh, this month, um, at the Cherokee Lane site, um, of the new Cherokee Lane site on the Buck Lodge campus. And, uh, as you can see, there's a picture there at the bottom of it, at the off-site location, um, and uh, and it's right now being moved. If you move on, next slide. We had, uh, eight groundbreakings, uh, for projects that are getting started. Two of them are, uh, standard projects. There are two middle schools, William Wirt Middle School, which is a replacement, and New Glen Ridge Area Middle School, which is a, a, a completely new school. Uh, and they're both projected for occupancy in August twenty twenty-three. We have the ACF blueprint schools, uh, of which we had six. Um, uh, New Adelphi Area Middle School, Drew Freeman Middle School, which is a replacement, uh, Kenmore Middle School, which is a replacement, the new Southern Area K- rate, which is, uh, a brand-new school. We have Walker Mill, uh, which is a, um, a replacement, and we have Highstone Middle School, which is also a replacement. If you move to the next slide, please. Um, and so we have a number of schools in design. Uh, we have suit and high school modernization, which is coming to the end of its design period. Uh, we should be in construction next year on that. William Schmidt, which is also, we're, we're going to CMA right now on that, and we should be issuing the CMA and the TPIP on that one. Uh, New Northern Adelphi Area, uh, High School, which, uh, is, uh, is very well along the design, a new inter- new international, uh, high school, which has, uh, been in design for quite a while. We're trying to to get that knocked free. Keep going, uh, down. Next slide. Um, so, uh, what was approved for our FY twenty-two budget? So let me give you a, a feel for what, what the, the county approved last year, um, and the state. Keep going. So for those of you who are new to the board, uh, and are not familiar with the cycle of funding, so in, um, what we do is, uh, in May, we put together the educational facilities master plan, which is sort of like the blue- blueprint for what we're going to do long-term. And then we have, we draft our capital budget in August. Um, and we go through the approval process through September. Um, the CIP is due to the state and to the county in October. Um, and so we try to have that ready, and they then approve it through their process, um, which takes, uh, they give us usually ninety-five percent approval in November of where they think the, the budget's going to go. And then we get a sort of a final approval somewhere around, um, January or March. And then, um, we also have, uh, the county that their process goes all the way into, into the year, but then, uh, we get finally get a approval in June of everything. Uh, it's, the process is complete, and then we, the month of the budget ticks over in July, uh, and we start using it, and we have one to three years to implement that budget, uh, two years to implement it under, uh, under the state program and three years under the county. So if you'll keep going, please, next slide. So as you can see, this is some of our funding history, uh, that we've had over the last six years. Um, and so last year, we requested forty-six million, um, thirty-two thousand dollars from the state. We got thirty-four million dollars, uh, three hundred and tw- thirty-four million, three hundred and twenty-two dollars approved. Uh, we requested two hundred and ten million dollars from the county, and we got a hundred and seventeen million dollars, uh, from them, um, for a grand total of a hundred and fifty-one million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and as an aside, uh, last year's budget was a hundred and ninety-three that we got approved, and, uh, we spent over a hundred and fifty-five uh, million dollars this, this past year, uh, of which almost all that was a direct ground project. We kept, we kept moving quite well this year. So, um, that, that was a really good milestone for us. It was, we actually exceeded our expectations as far as using the capital last year. So next slide, please. So, um, what do we find? So, of course, we were moving Cherokee Lane Elementary School replacement, uh, forward again because a lot of the construction was done off-site. Uh, we weren't as hindered by the building, uh, the, uh, waiting on the building and site permit work. So we were able to move forward very quickly on that. We spent a lot of, uh, money there. Charles Flower HVAC upgrade, we were spending money on that. The new Glen Ridge area modernization, getting that through design and, and permit approval, and also working on the land swaps with, um, uh, parks and planning, uh, the suit and, again, the design of suit one. Uh, William Schmidt, that design, uh, that was funded through the, that budget. Go on, uh, next, download for William Schmidt. And then the William Work replacement, uh, we got funding for that. And so, uh, the state did, did fund those six projects. And then, uh, they also, uh, approved a local design funding for Cool Springs, uh, elementary school, the High Point High School modernization, and the new Northern Adelphi High School, um, area. So those projects got funding for design. And then the county also funded, um, HVAC upgrades, kitchen and food services, major repairs and lifecycle replacements, playgrounds, parking lots, stage renovations, and security upgrades and stadium upgrades. Uh, the stage renovations right now are going through master planning, and stadium upgrades are going to be starting. We're starting, uh, to curate sign on those now. Um, and so, uh, our, our FY twenty-three capital budget request, uh, is, uh, as we said before, is, is now what's before you. Um, and we have recommended an FY twenty-three CIP request of two hundred and sixty-seven million dollars, two hundred and fifteen million dollars of which is the county funding, and the state funding is fifty-one million dollars. And so the major projects that we're talking about are, areas are going to be, uh, eighty-nine point eight million dollars for four new schools or modernizations of existing schools. Um, that would include, um, some of the spending that we have, the final closeout spending on William Work and New Glen Ridge. It would include, uh, spending on, on suit one, uh, which is where a, a lot of the money comes from. Uh, then fifty-four point eight million dollars in countywide, county-only funding projects, including, but not limited to code compliance and mandate projects, major lifecycle replacements, projects, and stadium upgrades. There's, uh, thirty million dollars in systemic replacements, uh, two upgrades at, at existing schools, and twenty-two point two million for the ACF blueprint, uh, schools funding. Uh, it's not just for the current, um, uh, blueprint projects, but also for funding the Office of Alternative Infrastructure and Planning and Development, and their procurement of the second tranche. It's, uh, sort of mandated by the state money that we got under the Build to Learn Act. Um, and then there's twenty-two million in stage renovations, modernizations, recycle one-approved projects. We got twenty million dollars in CTE suits, uh, Southern Hub freestanding classroom. That will be a, a, uh, a freestanding building that will provide extra classroom space, uh, for Bay Area-type, uh, base-sized classroom spaces for programs across on high school. Uh, it will be a, 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 a facility about fifty feet away from the building so that we don't have to upgrade the entire building, so we don't have to swing the school, but it will allow us to create the additional spaces that we need for expanding the CTE program there. Uh, ten point four million dollars in roof replacement projects at existing schools and facilities. Uh, ten million dollars in central garage and transportation projects. I will be kicking off the Mulligan project, uh, get the construction on that. And there are a couple other projects behind that, following up on that. Six million dollars in planning and design, uh, fund, funding for, but not limited to upcoming feasibility studies, design services, and for future projects, and, uh, one point eight million dollars in design funding for one early childhood center. So as you can see, uh, this is how the, the, the capital breaks out. Um, basically, we're asking for, uh, for William Work, the, the balance of the state funding, which is eight hundred and eleven, uh, thousand dollars, uh, and then six point nine million dollars in funding from the county. New Glen Ridge, we're asking for the balance of that money from the state, which is, uh, one million, uh, forty-eight thousand, and another thirteen million dollars from the county. William Schmidt, we're not asking any money from the state, but we are going to be asking nine million dollars, or almost ten million dollars for, uh, for the, that project from the county. Suitland, uh, as I said before, was going to be the lion's share of the, of the requested funding, and that's, uh, twenty-seven million dollars from the state and roughly thirty million dollars from the county uh, for a grand total of eighty-nine, um, million, eight hundred and nineteen, uh, thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, next slide, please. So we also are going to ask for some systemic funding, uh, from the state. Um, and that's going to be, uh, ten million dollars, uh, from, uh, for Winchit Wheatley and their HVAC replacement. Uh, and, uh, roughly thir- thir- three point seven million dollars for that, for, from the county. Uh, Charles Flowers, since we're doing the, the HVAC, we're going to also need to fix the roof there. And so we're asking for roughly seven million dollars for a roof replacement there, about five point one from the, from the state for that. And then, um, Philcy Williams, uh, that's an HVAC project, uh, and it's sort of, uh, uh, w- these last two projects are sort of breaking a rule that we've been trying to establish. We're trying not to, not to ask for less than ten million dollars for any, for any project that we are, that we're giving state funding. But, um, these two are, are sort of big projects that we want to move forward. Uh, so, and they're, they're related to other projects. So the Philcy Williams, that's an HVAC replacement for nine million dollars, which we're asking for six point five from the state. Next slide, please. Uh, so we're also asking for roughly, uh, uh, shortfall funding, uh, roughly two million dollars for open space, uh, classroom pod conversion projects for financial closeout, uh, and, uh, another five million dollars for systemic replacement projects, financial closeouts as well. Next slide, please. And then, uh, countywide projects, these are cap- projects that are only funded by the county. Uh, we got another, we got eight hundred thousand dollars for asbestos abatement, uh, one million dollars for ADA upgrades, uh, seven hundred thousand for buried, buried storage fuel tanks, about one point seven for fire alarms and hydrants, um, another hundred thousand for lipar mediation. Um, that's an ongoing project that's, that's been going on for quite a while, and we're sort of coming to the tail end of that. Um, next slide, please. Uh, again, we have the stage renovations, uh, and that's all in master planning right now, and we, we hope to start, uh, moving projects through in FY twenty-three, so that's twenty-two million dollars there. Twelve million of it's for healthy schools, it's like an HVAC project. Five point six million for core enhancements, two point four million dollars for future ready, one point two for safe passages to schools, which is sort of like parking lots and sidewalks and that sort of thing. Uh, and secure access and, uh, facility entrances, uh, that's another seven hundred and fifty thousand. That's like, uh, storefront vestivials and things of that nature. Uh, then, uh, we are also asking for design construction funds needed for future projects. That'll be the Francis R. Pugh's, uh, Early Childhood Center. Um, and that's a, that's a modernization addition of one point eight million dollars. And again, the CTE Southern Hub, that's all county-funded for twenty million dollars. And then, uh, we have additional project-wide categories. We have HVAC upgrades in, in major projects that's ten uh, million dollars. You have the central garage and transportation, again, ten million dollars. Kitchen and food services, this is our annual request for three point two for them. Land and building infrastructure, that's, uh, five point, uh, two million dollars. Major repairs, uh, and lifecycle replacements, that's ten thousand, I mean, ten million dollars. Uh, parking lots and driveways, that's, uh, one point five. Planning and design, again, six million dollars. Playground equipment and playfield replacement, one million dollar. Roof replacement projects, ten million, ten point three million dollars. Uh, security upgrades, three million dollars, stadium upgrades of three point five million dollars, and standalone grasses, that's where your modular classrooms that we use for boundary adjustments, that's, uh, six million dollars for a grand total of six, sixty-nine point eight million dollars. Uh, if you go to the end here, uh, again, all that adds up to a state funding request of fifty-one point three million dollars and a county funding request of two hundred and fifteen point eight million dollars for the restated two hundred and sixty-seven million point one. Um, two hundred and seventy point one million dollars for the total budget request. Um, and so this is the, sort of the request process that we're going through right now. As stated earlier, we have the first reader for the board already, that was on August twelve. We have a public hearing coming up on September ninth. We have second reader on September twenty-third, submissions to the IAC in the county on October fourth. October fifteenth, submission of IAC for comprehension maintenance plan that was coming from the, uh, building services side. November twenty twenty-one, the government announces, uh, the first phase of capital funding. On December twenty twenty-one, IAC approved seventy-five percent of the FY twenty-three capital budget. January, county government public hearing for the budget. Uh, February, um, in two thousand twenty-two will be the IAC group ninety percent of the FY twenty-three should be capital budget. Uh, March twenty twenty-two, county government public hearing for the budget. April twenty-two is the state legislature adopts the final budget. May, IAC approves the projects for the FY, uh, twenty-three CIP, and then the county approves the final budget in May of, uh, twenty twenty-two. And then the IRC releases the adopted, uh, FY twenty-three CIP. Um, are there any questions?
Thank you. Madam Chair, we are turning it back over to you now.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. I see hands are going up. Um, and the first hand I see is Board Member Ahmed.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Um, Mr. Matlock, I have a question about Slide Eight, uh, Cherokee Lane Elementary Schools. I actually have a lot of comments and then a question, but, uh, Slide Eight, it talks about Cherokee.
I'm sorry, I can't hear anybody.
Can you hear me now? Can, can anybody else hear me?
We can hear you, Ms. Ahmed.
I can hear you.
I can't hear anybody.
He made me to come, come in and go back out. Go out and come back in.
All right. Is, um, Ms. Chason, can you respond? Are you able to respond?
Yes, I can hear her and I can respond.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Burke, if I can reclaim that, that missing time, thank you. Um, so my question is around Cherokee Lane Elementary School and the off-site construction. For my colleagues that are new and for members of the public, uh, my understanding is the CIP department, my recollection is that the CIP department came to this board in a previous year with the off-site construction idea for Cherokee Lane as part of the state's innovative incentive pilot program. And the purpose of that program was to provide funding to certain school districts for certain projects where construction cost per student would be thirty percent below the state average. Basically, what that means is that, uh, the thought was that we'd substantially reduce the construction cost of Cherokee Lane and get money from the state for it to go through this program. But what I found is that Cherokee Lane is costing more than twice an elementary school that's the same size that was renovated recently in my district. And I think because of the rising costs, I don't see that this project qualifies for that extra pilot incentive funding from the state because of the expense. And so my point is Cherokee Lane was bid prior to the pandemic. Cherokee Lane is an elementary school. The construction cost per square foot for this elementary school is over five hundred dollars. Meanwhile, our current elementary schools that are in the CIP proposal, I was looking through that booklet, um, uh, very intensely over the past couple of days. Our current elementary schools that are in that, in the CIP proposal are at four hundred to four hundred and forty dollars per square foot, which is much less than the five hundred dollar per square foot, and this is during a time of cost inflation, and even one of those is a special center. And also, we currently have middle schools in the CIP that have a much lower cost, construction cost per square foot in the proposal as well, like William Work. Um, hit their construction cost per square foot is three eighty-seven. And New Glen Ridge Middle School has a construction cost per square foot at four hundred and seven dollars. But basically, none of the projects that I looked at, including the high schools, cost nearly as much per square foot as Cherokee Lane, which is an elementary school. So my question is, I'm how does.
Ms. Ahmed, Ms. Ahmed, I'm sorry.
Is my, my question, yes?
Your time is, has expired. Our board staff member seems to be, um, away from her desk, and so the, the time has expired. I'm sorry.
No, I've, I've been here the whole time. She still had two minutes left, two minutes and forty seconds.
Yeah, I did not have that on my timer.
She asked, she was interrupted in the beginning when she restart, I reset her time after her interruption.
I have just one, I just want to ask the question, Ms. Williams, and then that maybe can be provided as a follow-up item. So my question is, how does an elementary school construction cost over five hundred dollars a square foot? And when did we know that we were going to basically be buying one school for the price of two? Because I do recall that this project was submitted to the board in two phases. And the fir- first phase was, uh, about the off-site construction portion. So that's my. So that's my question, if it can't be answered right now, then it can be answered as a follow-up. But that was a really big concern for me, thank you.
Okay, I can finally hear everybody, I'm sorry, Ms. Ahmed. I I think the question that you had asked about was that why the cost of the of Cherokee Lane had gone up? So the the problem that we had was partly driven by the the cost of the of the site work that we ended up going into this for. Expected the site work to to be, the site to be in a much different condition. And we were asked to to advance this program along in and without a really a feasibility study. And so I asked, when they were drafting the legislation, if they would give us a two-year period to do some planning before we were required to put the project under before you for inclusion into a CIP. And then we were told, no, they really wanted this to go in one year. So we only have one year to come up with a plan for this. And so we ended up selecting a site, we ended up having more problems decided. Actually, we didn't get approval of the site permit until maybe just a few months ago, like like March. And so that the work that we've had to do on that site to remove unsuitable soils, the work that we've had to do to fix a lot of the problems related to that that program have really driven the costs. And there are other conditions that we've run into with delays and costs related to those delays that have just, you know, ballooned the cost. Now, I will say this, the overall cost of that building is higher than we expected. And we thought we could get it done roughly thirty percent of what the current, what we currently spend on a on an elementary school in our county. And we weren't able to meet that metric, because that's what the numbers worked out to be. And we weren't able to meet the metric, so we tried very hard to do so, but we didn't do it.
Before you go to the next person, can I just ask staff to make sure they try to make their responses as concise as possible, because the board members are too much.
Thank you, Ms. Adams, I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Next up, I have Board Member Boozer Struther.
Thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Matlock. Glad to see many of these projects moving forward. I wanted to ask about the CIP, the public hearing. I I haven't seen any marketing of how to participate and wanted to know when that will go up so that we could promote that to attendees. And I also, I think the Cherokee Lane, how this went with Cherokee Lane is of great interest. And I always saw this state program as a pilot. And I think we have a lot of feedback to give on this pilot. But I did want to note that this really is two elementary schools, it'll seat eight hundred. And it was, that was a change in terms of the Adelphi overcrowding relief plan. And I think some of the other schools do not seat eight hundred students. So I did want to call out, there was certainly a difference there, but the square foot cost absolutely. Need to look at the success of this pilot program.
Well, yeah, so I'm not sure of the question.
Question is about the CIP hearing and how there's no, I couldn't find anything about how someone signs up to participate. I was just noting some of my reflections on Cherokee Lane.
Yeah, we hadn't, I I don't think we've done any real marketing on the, we didn't set the date for it. I think that's usually not run by our our office, we're just, we just participate in in that in that hearing.
Yeah, that typically is a, yeah, that's typically a function of the board staff. The date has been set for September ninth, but we'll follow up so we can assist.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer Struthers. Next up is Board Member Thomas.
Thanks very much. Hi, Mr. Matlock, good evening. And I had some questions about the construction of William Worth Middle School first, and then hopefully have enough time to ask some other questions. So Slide Nine says that William Worth Middle School started construction in the spring. And I'm curious to know, has construction actually started on the project, or is the project still in permitting?
So the project is still in permitting, we just finished that portion of it.
Got it, okay, that was going to be my next question was, has the project received all the required permits yet? And it sounds like the answer is yes.
No, we, they haven't been issued, we finished all of the submission work that we had to turn in for it. We're waiting for it to be issued, but it's, we're pretty much done with it, we had to do easements. And those easements had to be recorded, and they've just got finished being done, so they should be issuing the permits.
Got it, is that usually the like frame of time, is this like on on par with usually the timeframe that this 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 process takes?
Yeah, it takes a long time to get to DPI.
Yep, yep, figured as much, okay. And another question is, are they allowed to to start construction activities or just mobilization activities before the permits are issued?
We had to relocate some of the temporaries, that as you know, is a big temporary park behind the school. And that work has, they relocated, taken some of them out now, and they relocated some of them. But and then they're just getting ready to start mobilizing. So once we issue the NTP, they will start doing work in earnest. Probably have a community meeting around that.
Great, yeah, and I'm sure we'll be in touch about that when that when that comes. I I again, I'm sure that this is maybe similar to the usual timeline that it takes. And I understand that navigating DPI and all of the different steps there is a time to take to make a process. I just think it's potentially, I guess, misleading to say the project or the construction has started when it technically hasn't. But I do understand and 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 just wanted to like point that out and and note that. The other question that I have is, correct me if I'm wrong, would this be appropriate? Want me to talk about turf fields and fields at schools, yes, correct? I actually just, I've I've reached out with issues at Parkdale High School's field for several years. And I know you and your team have heard about it quite a bit. And actually, today, there was a soccer game at Parkdale High School, and one of the referees deemed their field unplayable. This to me, you know, this is, this field has been an issue for quite a while. But it's been something that the 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 school community has gritted through and found a way to make it work. And today seems to have been the day that it was not actually an option. And so I'm just curious to know, is there a way that we can prioritize this? And and and, you know, move this project, you know, forward or at least, you know, up up towards, up for consideration for us, you know, sooner since that, since this field was considered unplayable today?
So right now, we have two schools that had gotten funding that we were working on there. And that was Laurel and and.
Bladensburg.
Bladensburg, those two schools have gotten funding. And we were waiting for state funding that got blocked about a year ago, two years ago, actually. We thought we were going to get nine point eight million dollars that was going to be allowing us to advance some more fields. A new grant has been issued by the state that we are in the process of filling out all the paperwork for. And that's for nine point two million dollars. And we will be able to advance some of the the fields that we're having issues with with that funding. And I believe Parkdale is on the list. I would have to check, but I believe it is.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Board Member Thomas, next up is Board Member Adam Stafford.
Okay, thank you so much, and I wanted to just thank you for the presentation and the mention of the Bladensburg field. That was one question that I had, and I know that they have now been relocated. I sent some pictures, and I do thank you all for taking note of that, so I will take this information back. But also, I noticed that there, in your presentation, you mentioned one point two million for safe passages to schools, which can include areas where there aren't sidewalks. And as you know, this is a widespread problem in our county, but particularly behind Bladensburg Elementary School, where students have to walk from, you know, over four hundred students are walking in an area that's high traffic with no sidewalk. I was wondering, I know we have done advocacy with the State Highway Administration, but could some of that funding be used to create some type of temporary passageway for those students? And because it is truly dangerous for those students to walk there. And then also, could you clarify the amount that was spent this year and in the year previously, actually, versus what was received from the state? I'm trying to understand what you were mentioning there, and I may have a follow-up after that.
So I wouldn't have all the the amount of monies that were spent for each year from the state and versus what we received. I'd have to follow up with that in writing to you, because I I just don't know that information off the cuff. But I can, and as far as the safe passages money, the the stage renovations projects are five schools that we're trying to modernize over a period of five to seven years. And so the money is limited to those schools, and I don't believe Bladensburg Elementary is included on that list. But that doesn't mean that we couldn't do and use money for major repairs to possibly fix something that's needs repair.
Yes, and this is, this would be just a temporary solution, I believe the project has been approved by S H A. But we are just trying to find some type of safe way for students to cross the the busy street. But yeah, if you could please, and if we could notate, just getting that documentation. I believe you said earlier that you were able to spend more of the money received from the state in this past year than previously.
Yes, this year, we didn't project to spend as much as we did. But with schools being closed the way they were, we were able to advance some projects faster and spend more of the money than we anticipated. And we spent, we 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 usually don't spend more than seventy percent of our previous approved budget in any particular year, because it's spaced out over time, we spend the money, it's like a sort of like a stream of revenue spend. But this year, we were able to spend roughly a hundred and fifty five million, a total budget for this particular year, which was roughly almost about, almost eighty percent of the money that we got approved of in previous year. So it was a, it was a good year.
I'd say that's good, and I'm wondering, what what can we take into this school year to ensure that we are spending the money that we're receiving from the state? Because that is important for us to spend that, because there are so many schools that are in need of so so many repairs. I'm happy to hear about Flowers High School, but there and there are also so many others. And so if we're not spending that funding, you know, it, these are students and families that that suffer. So I'm looking forward to hearing more on that, thank you for your report.
Thank you, Board Member Adam Stafford, Board Member Queen.
Oh my, thank God, so many questions, I might have to send some of these to you guys, I do apologize. But one of the questions is, because I'm looking at the big book that was sent to us. And I noticed, well, Walkhamville Middle School and a couple of our schools, we got some very few, very very few tanks. And I'm concerned about that, because some of them have not been moved, and they had a short percentage of. So please give me an update on all the fuel tanks that we have at these schools that need to be moved, removed. I don't really want an answer now. But but I'm also concerned, I know it was mentioned about turf field, you guys know Lago has a very turf field, I've been fighting for that. So please, when we do turf field, don't forget Lago turf field, and don't forget the fact that Ernestus has a bad floor in their gym, that it's really not good for kids to be falling on. So we need to adjust and handle some of the issues there. My next, my question I do want answers, though, I noticed that Sutland is on here for modelization. Are they going to get a new school renovation, or it's just going to be a modelization? I'm just curious, is that refurbished, or when you say modelization, what do you mean? I also see in this book a lot of, like a roof that was supposed to have been done, and money has been put for for like Kettering and some codes for Don Vade and Lake Auburn. But I don't see these things have been completed, and I'm concerned about that. Thomas Pullen HVAC was supposed to be completed, and I'm only seeing thirty seven percent. So I'm concerned about that, Phyllis Williams, you mentioned it, you mentioned more money. But I saw in here in here that money was already allocated, and it still wasn't nothing done. So I'm kind of like concerned with some of the things that are being asked, when I'm seeing certain things that has not been completed. But so I'm going to send the list of these things. Oh, and another thing, Lago, the lockers, we have them on here, it's one hundred percent completed. I walked that school recently, and it's missing plates on them lockers. So how dare we say it's been completed, that company needs to finish it and put them missing plates there. We should not be saying this is done, where they have not done what the taxpayers paid for. So that's important also, so I, when I saw it was complete, I was like, no way, we're missing a lot of plates. And a lot of them brand new lockers at Lago High School, and that definitely needs to be fixed. But I do want the question answered about Sutland.
Okay, so the Sutland will be a full replacement. And but it's going to be phased, so they'll still be in part of the building while we're tearing down other pieces of the building and rebuilding. So it was, it's a phased construction, but it'll be a complete replacement.
Thank you so very much, but please make a note, Lago lockers are not completed. They are not completed, and that need to be addressed, and I'll send email on arrest and stuff, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Queen, Board Member Mickens Murray.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I lost contact for some reason with this entire presentation. So I'd like to ask for an electronic version and the name of someone that I can call if I have questions. And I would also like a copy of the CIP big book that my colleagues have, that I don't have, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Mickens Murray. As always, you can send questions through the CEO, and she'll put them in the hands of the appropriate person. But Mr. Matlock is the the partner head for the capital programs. Next up, we have Board Member Valentine.
Thank you, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but this is sort of where school construction and future technology comes together. And I've asked about whether, you know, for example, the schools that we're building now are going to be for students who are going to be attending our schools in two thousand and fifty. And school can look a lot different in two thousand and fifty. And the question is, at least even in a pilot phase, how are we using the construction of our school and the design of our schools to really look forward to how students are going to be learning, coming together, using technology? You know, I've had conversations with folks who design schools, and schools of the future are going to look more like libraries, where you have an open space with the with the with the laptop and then breakout room for small group projects with mirrors that you can, I mean, windows you can look into the main space. We're building thirty-year schools, but we're using sort of nineteen ninety type of views of how school was, the school size is going to look like. And so, you know, I know Zuckerman is gone. But how are we looking at how we're designing schools to make sure that we're looking forward to the students, to my my grandkids and how they attend school, and how we use technology one-to-one, maybe alternate school days? I can imagine kids going to schools five days a week, where we can use technology to maybe like go two days a week or not at all. But how can we design schools now to ensure that we're looking up to the future?
So one of the things that we're, so the buildings that we're building right now are are focusing on a lot of different issues that we were, people didn't think about before. One of them, some of them are very basic, air quality, the ability to hear, the ability to get proper lighting, task lighting, daylighting. We are going with more open spaces, if you look at any designs in the ACF schools, and even the new school of Cherokee Lane Elementary School that's built offsite, we have much more open spaces, a lot of collaboration spaces, a lot of soft seating areas. We have a deconstructed library in in the new, in the new elementary school Cherokee Lane. So we're trying to, a lot of different things that allow children to to integrate and to to collaborate on on a regular basis. That's part of the design that you're going to see in all these buildings, you're going to see steam labs and that sort of thing. But they're still school buildings, they still have classrooms, they still reflect what we are currently doing. And so they're 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 not that much different, except that we are considering all those elements that I talked about and more. And we're measuring them and trying to make sure that we're meeting all the criteria and that we, that are needed for healthy learning environments. And those healthy learning environments include the air quality, as I said before, good sound quality. So students in the back of the room hear the same thing as students in the front of the room here. Good task lighting so they can read, all those things are related to test scores and student performance, and that's what we're focused on right now.
I appreciate that, I just think it kind of concludes, I think we talk about, again, short as a bus drivers, I can imagine fifteen, twenty years from now, we're going to, you know, it's going to be different from then. Trying to fit thousands of students in a school building, feed them, get them there five days a week, I just think it's going to be antiquated. And so if we look to, again, a hybrid model as how we build schools, they don't have to be as big if you're only going to have half as many students in the building at a time, because you don't have to bus half as many, because half are virtual. I think even if we pilot and we look at maybe one school in a district that does this. Uh, I think even if we pilot and we look at maybe one school in the district that does this, I would be in full support of that and look forward to just having further conversations about this. Uh, I think we can innovate, uh, where we are with, again, with post-COVID, with our bus shortage, with the adoption of virtual learning, parents are interested in it, students clearly are. Uh, children who are sort of are natives to it, not, you know, folks who had to immigrate into the system. They are native to technology. Let's just lead, let's lead. I think we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Valentine. Uh, for round one, we have, uh, the Chair, Dr. Miller, and then I will end the round one and then we will begin with round two. Uh, Madam Chair.
Uh, Mr. Matlock, I just wanted to know, when you talked about Sutland being, uh, re- um, uh, rev- revitalized, uh, in stages. What, at what stage will the Performing Arts Center be made?
I don't have a phasing plan in front of me. I can arrange for you to get, uh, to get, um, that to you, but I don't have it right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Matlock, I have a few questions and a few comments. Um, you touched on it a little bit regarding the amount of work that you were able to do, um, during the COVID with school, with the school children out of the building. And, um, I know that it is a, i- it's a challenge usually because of staffing and materials and all of that stuff that you have to do in order to manage a project. And so I appreciate you all getting the work done, um, in, in this, uh, in the pandemic. So I, I don't know if you, if you mentioned it earlier, but I had a question here. Compared to previous years under the COVID, uh, conditions, how much more work were you able to get done, um, in, in this year?
Well, there were some phased projects that got held up because we, nobody was allowed in buildings. There were some projects that were, that, that people were already out of the buildings. They were allowed to continue, move forward. So they didn't get slowed down. But once, uh, we were allowed to go back into some of the buildings, it was like having a massive swing, if you know what I mean. So it was like having, you know, all these schools swung for like three or four months. And so you could advance work a lot faster and a lot of our projects now are phased because they're larger. So a lot of the work that we were, we were trying to get done, got done a little faster. Some didn't get done faster. Some of them ran into problems and we still had to deal with them. But we did get to do a lot of more work in some places because we didn't have to work around the students and we didn't have to work off hours and things like that. So we got through a lot of things faster and that was a good thing. Um, and we also managed to get a lot of our, um, backlog that we had for building services. Um, they had a lot of small projects and we restructured ourselves and gave them a dedicated project manager. We actually gave them two dedicated project managers. And those dedicated project managers have been able to advance those projects, like generator replacements, um, small in-kind replacements, move those projects faster.
Mm-hmm. And so thank you for that, because that was my second, second question around what were you able to catch up on? Um, with, with that, uh, information on the, the work that you, that you were able to get caught up on, if we do not spend the money in this year, it's not returned to the county or the state, is it? Are we able to carry that over? So if this year we were able to, to meet seventy percent of the work, that other thirty percent, you're able to roll into next year and, and get that done and, and bill against that, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we always do. Most projects aren't like, so you'll see a, but then you'll see as, um, a board member, um, Queen was pointing out that you see, uh, project money for a, a project broken up in several tranches, right? So what happens is we almost never get all the funding for any particular project in one year. Most of our capital projects are funded over a stream of three to five years. Um, and, um, so we do pieces of it in, in different years. And so you'll see the project money broken up. We don't, sometimes you don't plan to spend it in that year that we asked for. We're planning to spend it out into one or two years. It's just, it's just the way it, uh, capital.
Is this a guideline to just sort of anticipate and, and project what you plan to do? It's, this, this money is spent over, like you said, a two to three-year period. So you predict that you're gonna spend a certain amount within a certain, you know that you're gonna get to it sooner rather than later because it's coming up, you're at that phase.
Yeah, the problem, yeah. Yeah, the problem is, in order to put, uh, uh, the work under contract, you have to have the appropriation. Even if the wall of work can't be done in a year, in order to meet the legal requirements, you must have the, the money appropriated by the, by the funding party before you can actually go out and contract for the money. So I have to have everybody agree they're gonna give me the money before I can actually enter into a contract for the work.
So there is, there is sort of like a, a, in a, a process in which the money becomes available to you. First is approved, so they set that aside and then they are appropriated, which means you can draw down on it. And once you draw down on it, you can spend it basically. So I appreciate that, uh, information, especially for those board members that may not have, um, the information and knowledge and, and experience in this industry. My next question is, is more specific around, uh, schools in District Nine. Um, and, uh, you know, we have a number of, of very old schools that have been pushed in, in the C I P program. Some of those things we can sort of deal with in Band-Aids. And so I appreciate the effort that you all have put some money in Frederick Douglass High School for one. And in some of our older schools such as, uh, Wind Park Middle, Bladensburg, Baden. Um, some of those, those major issues that we're having, either, uh, uh, air conditioning or something, uh, be on the interior, like doors or windows and things like that. Um, is there a way that I can, uh, share with some, I, and I just wanna say quickly, to share with some of my constituents where they can find that information in the C I P?
Thank you, Board Member, uh, Williams. Um, Board Member.
And then follow up. Thank you. I'm done, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, now we're going into round two. Board Member Ahmed.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Matlock, I'm referring to Slide Six when I'm speaking, um, to this particular point. Slide Six says that there are over six hundred and eighty active projects and thirty-nine percent of projects are in the final completion mode. So if I do the math, thirty-nine percent of six eighty is two sixty-five projects that are in final completion. In, in the construction world, to my understanding, once all of the final checklist work or the punch list work is done and the final payment is made to the contractor, that's when the project can be considered finally complete. And I know that the punch list is important because it looks at things like, are all the appliances working? Are there no leaks in the building? Is the heating and air conditioning functioning? Is the plumbing issue free? So I wanted to ask, have these two hundred and sixty-five projects, have all of their punch list work been completed and the final payments made?
So we have, uh, uh, before I, I came on board, uh, you may know this and a lot of you do. We, we did a lot of our small projects with state funded. And so a lot of those projects in that two, in that number are projects that were small state-funded projects that are in financial closeout. They're not closed out. Um, the work has been completed, but they're just not closed. And we're, and in some of the cases, uh, we are, we're going back because, uh, in, in trying to close them out financially. But we have a small team and we just haven't been able to close them all out. So a lot of those are projects that have been completed a long time ago, but they're still active and we have to count them.
Okay, so I mean, my request then might be moving forward, can you add a slice for litigation and a slice for the punch out phase in the pie chart? So we can get a more accurate view about, you know, what are the fully completed projects versus the ones that are still on the punch list? And then I.
We don't have anything in liti- we don't have anything in litigation.
Okay.
We do, yeah. But we do have a lot of projects that are, where we don't have the final paperwork from the, uh, from the vendor. Uh, where we're trying to close out paperwork. It's more paperwork closeout than actual work. It's, it's more about the administrative side.
Yeah, that's good to know. I, my whole thought process behind this question has really been, uh, related to understanding and knowing that our maintenance effectiveness assessment scores are amongst the lowest in the state. And so my thought is, is that because maintenance is inheriting these construction issues? And, and so that's kind of my thought process behind, um, this question to see are, are we, if we're not doing our punch list the way that we should and as quickly as we should, is that contributing to our maintenance issues? I don't know.
Um, I don't believe so. Um, uh, uh, there, again, your problem that you have is that we have buildings that are, uh, you have two hundred and eight buildings and their, their average age is very, very old and they're falling apart. And we're trying to keep them together, but, and I'm, I'm trying to modernize them as fast as I can. But the, the, you, you, when you, we go into an old building, just trying to fix the old building, uh, we keep finding things. And those things that you find, and I'm sure that maintenance is dealing with that, where, you know, you think you fix one thing and another thing pops loose. I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Matlock. I hear you.
Um, our last and second round, um, Board Member Queen.
Thank you so very much. Um, Mr. Matlock, when it comes to punch lists, lists and checks and balance, um, as you heard me state it earlier, and it's not just the lockers at Lago, um, it's been other things that I've noticed. Um, who is responsible for going behind these things, making sure that they are fully completed? Because I think we have an issue when things are saying they're completed when they're not fully completed.
It all, it all depends, to answer your question, it all depends on who's managing the project. Uh, we have project managers that from, on, on the capital side. We have project managers that we've recently assigned, um, uh, that we contracted for to help, um, building services. And we have people who are in, in the shops who do work on and, and manage their projects. So it all depends on who's managing the project.
So we need to start holding accountability to make sure these things are completed and not half done. And, because it doesn't, it doesn't look right, um, at all, especially knowing that our kids going back next weekend, half of the lockers are not really done right. Um, next thing I have, um, final question I have, and I don't know if it's for you, um, it would be about, a lot of our schools with facility maintenance issues with the I A C and a lot of them have failed and I'm really concerned about the ones in my district. Where has that been putting in under the C I P project?
Uh, well, we fund some projects that, that, that are requested by building services. But we don't do maintenance. We, we basically, we do modernizations. So we, we build schools, we renovate schools.
That falls under the comprehensive maintenance plan, which will be coming up before the board soon.
Okay, thank you so very much.
With that, that concludes our discussions. Um, we will now move to, uh, five-point-zero follow-up items and the recap of the Board Legal Counsel Committee meeting. Board Member Ahmed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, the Board Legal Counsel Committee met virtually on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one with the following members in attendance, myself, Dr. Juanita Miller, Sonia Williams, Joshua Thomas, and Edward Burrows. Uh, Board Member Judy Mickens Murray also attended as a guest. The committee reviewed and discussed, uh, a recommended path forward to address the Board Legal Counsel issue that was incorporated of the feedback from administration. Uh, Temporary Legal Counsel Plan A. The Office of Procurement contacts all firms that are not currently working with the Board P G C P S, the Board or P G C P S, from the MAVE-approved vendor list to see which ones would be available to provide temporary services to the Board regarding student appeals, labor employees appeals, and labor union appeals only. The Office of Procurement will then select a qualified firm that can start as soon, as soon as possible. In the case that the Office of Procurement cannot find a suitable qualified MAVE-approved vendor to provide services to the Board by September fifteenth, then we have Plan B, which is that the Board's hiring examiners, who are already on contract with the Board, will be authorized to provide legal counsel services to the Board regarding student appeals, labor employee appeals, and labor union appeals only. In either plan, the Office of Procurement will ensure all policies and practices are followed and contracts developed and signed up to the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, independent of any individual board member involvement. For Permanent Legal Counsel, the recommendation was that the Office of Procurement will conduct an entirely new R F P process, uh, which, uh, according to administration, will take approximately seventy-five days to complete and have a new firm awarded a contract. The R F P should be out for solic- solicitation for thirty days. Administration will provide clarity in the new R F P regarding the requirement of education law experience and that new firms are eligible for consideration. The hiring panel should consist of a completely new group of three board members approved by the Board. A suggested list of members are Sheila Adam Stafford, Pamela Boozer Strather, and Kenneth Harris. The committee unanimously voted in favor of forwarding this path, forwarding this path forward to the full Board for review and consideration during this September second, twenty twenty-one Board Work Session Meeting with the recommendation that it be approved for immediate implementation. At this time, I move, um, on behalf of the committee to, uh, approve the recommendation of the committee. And I don't believe a second is needed if it's moved on behalf of a committee, but Mr. Shelton can, uh, confirm.
Uh, Madam Chair, I just have a point of clarification. And maybe I misheard, uh, the committee mem, the committee chair, uh, speak on the vote. Would you repeat what you said about the vote from the committee?
Sure. I said the committee ultimately voted in favor of forwarding this path forward to the full Board for review in consideration during the September second Board Work Session Meeting with the recommendation that it be approved for immediate implementation. I can clarify the vote if that would be helpful. The vote was three to.
No, I was just, I thought I heard you say it was unanimous. So I just wanted to confirm that, that it was not unanimous. So thank you.
Is there a second? Well, before we move to a second, uh, are we, I sat up. I'm not understanding what we're voting on because you're saying the recommendation and there were several options you put in the recommendations. So I think we need to look at each of the options you put in there and then determine, uh, where we will go with those and have some discussion. But to say that you want to take a vote, um, on the recommendations, it doesn't get us anywhere. Uh, first of all, of the, you, um, you mentioned a Plan A, Plan B, um, and I'm sure there's some discussion relative to the temp- uh, temporary, um, temporary, uh, personnel coming in to do, um, hearings, uh, appeals, you know, something else you mentioned. And the concern there is that we're looking at piecemealing and, um, piecemealing, um, our legal counsel services. Um, so I'm, 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 I'm not clear that we're voting on anything specific except that, I'm not, it's not clear. When you, you talk about voting on, um, voting on the recommendations, because, uh, you've made recommendations for an ad hoc committee, uh, for the Board, uh, approved by the Board. And according to our bylaws, the Chair is the person that, uh, appoints persons to an ad hoc committee. So then we would be violating our own policy to say that, uh, this committee can, uh, approve of a, an ad hoc committee. The other thing is, um, uh, get back to the options. Uh, what are we going to do relative to what's sitting on the table now relative to the current R F P? So I'd like to have some, uh, further discussion because there's no, I ca- I don't see where there's a motion needed to accept recommendations, especially since there's no real clarity in terms of those recommendations. And when I say no clarity, you're talking about, uh, you, you've given several different, um, uh, recommendations or seven, uh, different plans. So I'd like to, um, have some discussion from other board members. May I?
I'm having a point of order from Mr. Shelton.
Yeah.
Uh, we're in discussion without a motion right now. And so, uh, for discussion, I'd like to second Ms. Ahmed's motion.
Well, I think Ms. Ahmed was correct. She didn't need to second. All she was doing was making a motion to accept the report. But then Dr. Miller was correct. Accepting a report doesn't do anything. You still have to have some action to make specific action items, you know, something that was gonna do. So the report is accepted, whether you make a motion, second or not, you've already accepted the report. She's made it. But the next step needs to be specific motions to do specific things. And no one's made a specific motion to do a specific thing. And I think it's appropriate to have discussion before you make a motion, because otherwise you don't know what you're talking about. So. I think the discussion's in order.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Board Member, let's see whose hand was first. Board Member Ahmed.
Thank you. Mr. Shelton, just, this is a point of clarification. I did, the motion was to approve the recommendations of the ad hoc committee and the recommendations were what I listed around Temporary Legal Counsel Plan A and Plan B. Around temporary legal counsel Plan A and Plan B, as well as permanent legal counsel. There was one plan for that. So this is a recommendation to approve all of that. Uh, Plan A, Plan B for temporary counsel and permanent legal counsel. I wanted, that was a concern, but that is the clarification there.
Well, then I stand corrected. I thought you were simply making a motion to accept the report. I think Dr. Miller is right. You can't make recommendations. Recommendations. You make the report and then the body decides what particular recommendations individually. What particular action items individually they're going to take. If you just make an emotional accept the report, then fine. But again, you're gonna have to make specific motions for each specific action. The committee can't come in and say, we're gonna do A, B, C, and D. The committee reports to the body and then the body decides what they're going to do based on the committee's recommendations. Am I making sense to you?
Yes, you're making sense. What I'm hearing, let me just repeat it back, is that, um. The, this body has to approve the recommendation of the committee. Um, and what what I've done is I've put forward the recommendation of the committee as a motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Discussion, uh, Board Member Judy, uh, Mickens Murray.
Thank you. I have, uh, two questions. Um, Board Member Ahmed, with your plan. There is no reference to the RFP that we have stand in place today. So what do you plan to do about that? And as a follow up, I would like to hear from the administration about whether or not. Uh, there are any risk to the Board of Education ignoring the RFP that's in place today.
I can respond to the first piece, Ms. Mickens Murray. Um, this is the recommendation of the committee. And so as you observed the meeting, um, the committee did not make any particular motions or recommendations as it relates to, uh, what you've just mentioned.
Okay, so. In absence of that, does that mean that the committee is not going to deal with the issue of we have an RFP? What happens to it?
That's a good question. Um, I, I don't have an answer for that.
I'd like to.
Appreciate that.
Uh, um, um, Board Member Mickens and Ahmed. Uh, there it, there was something mentioned in our report relative to, uh, the, um. Moving to the second, um, the second, yeah, the second bidder. And administration's recommendation was that, uh, before, uh, considering the second bidder. For us, uh, that, for us to, um, bring in the other, uh, bidders. And, uh, for interview before we make any other decisions relative to, uh, so something was mentioned.
No, excuse me, um, Madam Chair. I'm speaking to the, the plan that the committee approved. The plan that the committee approved is silent on that issue. So now I will look to the administration to help bring some clarity of what are the risks. To this board if we just leave an RFP hanging out there, or is there any risk?
So we gave several options, um, around how to handle, um, all of the. Request for proposals, and we listed it three times in our recommendations. One, and in all three times, we said reevaluate all the current firms. And potentially include an objective member from our Office of General Counsel. In the reevaluation of those remaining three. Then another time, we also put reevaluation of all proposals based upon the stated evaluation criteria. Um, and then the third time, we said also reevaluate all proposals using some type of consensus scoring system. Because what we don't want to do is create a situation where we end up with a B protest. So we wanted to ensure that the reason you're going back out to do another RFP is because that you found. That none of the other three firms meet your needs.
Okay, I hope my five minutes is not up. I read all of the proposals. And in all of the proposals that are left, they all have education law. They are full service firms. So I guess I look back to the committee to find out. What? Yeah, explain what you mean by education law. Because these are full service law firms. So I'm not understanding what it is you want us to support. Question. Anybody?
Board Member, uh, Pam, well, I, uh, who were you addressing your question to?
It's, it's back to the committee members because remember, although I attended that meeting, I was not allowed to ask any questions. I honored that. So now tonight is the only time I have an opportunity to ask questions. And I read the RFPs. Education law is in all of them. So I'm trying to figure out what is it that the committee want us to put a new RFP out? To support that's not in these RFPs. And I, uh. The only people that can answer that question are those that supported the, um, the recommendation. And so I think it's important that those people, those members speak up as to what they're asking members to do.
And if I could kind of clarify, I hope I didn't muddy it. If the committee has specific recommendations. They need to articulate what those specific recommendations are, and you can vote them up one of, one at a time. Recommendation A, you voted up or down. Recommendation B, you voted up or down. But it's got to be specific coming out what you recommended this body do.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Does any one of those who voted, uh, for this, uh, approval of this plan, um, have a response for, uh, Board Member Mickens Murray?
I, I can attempt to speak, but I, I can't speak on behalf of the others that voted for this, but I can speak on behalf of myself. In terms of an education law requirement, just making sure that education law is specifically required as opposed to say. I have experience in this, 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 or this. It's this and this, 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 or this. Does that make sense?
No.
I was making sense.
I, I can, I can add also.
Uh, Board Member, uh, Burrows, I have to recognize, um, Board Member Boozer Struther first. Her hand was up before yours. Would you like to give a response to the question, uh, Board Member Boozer Struther?
And, no, I, I just had points of discussion. I, the committee needs to answer the questions.
Okay, so then, um, we'll come back to you for your concerns. Board Member Burrows, you were going to add to what Board Member Ahmed was addressing?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, and correct me if I'm, uh, wrong, Ms., uh, Board Member Ahmed. But the first recommendation, A, is to immediately get a MAVE certified. Uh, and for the public who might not know, MAVE is the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. Uh, it's, uh, a, a body that supports every local school board in the state of Maryland. Uh, the A recommendation, uh, I guess number one, letter A recommendation is to have a MAVE. Uh, approved firm immediately help us with our appeals. Uh, we've heard, and we've received the emails from the public. We know that we have a significant backlog in appeals. Uh, it is my understanding that there are MAVE approved firms who, uh, could and will help us with appeals. Uh, and so the initial recommendation is to immediately reach out and get a MAVE approved firm to catch us up on the backlog. Um, is, that, that's all, that's also your understanding, right, Ms. Ahmed?
Yeah, that does not address the question that, uh, Board Member Mickens Murray has on the floor.
Uh, and then, um, to release an RFP to ensure that we have a highly qualified, uh, law firm. Um, well, and I'm not sure how much I can say here because, um, I believe our scoring is private. Um, but I can tell you that if you have a handful of firms, less than a handful of firms that apply. I don't believe that it's in the board's best interest to just pick. The lesser of the, uh, of who's left, you know, I think, you know, our, our work is so important that we deserve. A highly skilled, highly qualified, uh, law firm that specializes in education law. Not development or developers, not with, so, uh, I'll just leave it at that.
Board Member. Uh, Sheila Adams.
Stafford. Yeah, um, so I think, you know, uh, Board Member Mickens Murray, the issue with the previous RFP. Was that we actually, that process was tainted because a group actually made it all the way through and was voted on. By the board that never should have gotten all, all the way there. Um, that, that, um, that particular company, uh, according to what feedback we received from the administration. Uh, shouldn't have even been considered from day one. Uh, so, you know, that's why we need to start this process over because. The whole entire process has been tainted. And so. I think that going with a MAVE approved vendor immediately so that we can fix our backlog that really impacts students. And parents and teachers and other employees of our school system, that's our most important thing we need to do tonight. And so.
Board Member, uh, Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to make clarification on, um. Um, the MAVE approved legal service providers, there are three of them. And they have listed about thirty services that the company will provide. It starts with ABA Section four oh five compliance, appellate litigation. Arbitration and mediation, charter school, school law, collective bargaining and negotiation, constitutional law. It goes on and on and on. Education foundation is a part of it. They have procurement issues, principal services, pupil services, real estate law and transaction, and so on and so on. So when you try to define, if we were to try to define educational law. We may be missing the boat when it comes to all of the litigating proceedings that a legal service provider can provide us. So I think that we have to be clear and precise on what we mean by educational law. And looking at the information that MAVE has provided to us. They list all the areas of service that the three firms that are on their list would provide. Now, when you compare that list to the list that was included in one of the firms that did not make it as the top two. And we will not go into the scoring issues that we had. When you look at that list, there was one firm that checked off the majority of these items that, for some reason. According to the, the scoring, they didn't make it to the top three. The top, I'm sorry, the top two. So. A few months ago, when we first started this process, it was asked. That we go to MAVE and we consider those people on the list. They were all considered. Two of them are already doing business with PGCPS. Either on the administration side, or they're part of our hearing process, which. They disqualifies them from being used because you cannot sit on both sides of the litigation. The one remaining firm, when asked a few months ago. Determined that they would not provide service to PGCPS. Recently, as of today, a discussion was had with one of the managing partners. And what they said was, this is something that they would, because we called them again. They said this is something that they would have to take up with their partners, which in my mind was a nice way of saying. Thank you, but no, thank you. So if any of the board members would like to reach out to these folks or get a legal opinion on. Whether or not the two firms that are already providing service to PGCPS in a legal stance. Can do so for us in these appeals, then you're, you're welcome to do so. But again, as I mentioned in the committee meeting, we shared this with you all before. And for some reason, some of our board members continue to discount. The experience of the board members and what they bring to the table, and we continue to, to waste time. Now, if we go back and redo the RFP. And we are talking about seventy five days, if we started today, we're already talking mid-November. And if we don't have a, a, an, a firm on board. To provide us with legal support in these appeals, we're talking until November. So, um, I think that I agree with the, the experience of the administration that said. We should go back and look at the remaining firms that are eligible. Now, the one firm that was, that was disqualified, it was not until we went through, they started. The administration started to go through the contract award process that that information was found out. So I don't believe that tainted our review of the other firms, at least from. I said on the committee, from my standpoint, that did not taint my ability to score properly the other firms. So I don't believe that the process is tainted where we cannot go to the other three firms that are at, at our disposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member, um, Williams. Uh, I know your next Board Member Struthers, but I'd like to hear from Dr. Golson, if you don't mind. Dr. Golson.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we keep using the, the terminology around education law attorney. So this is where my concern comes in around, and I wanted to go through what the definition of education law attorney is. It's a person who represents public schools, private schools, and their community college. And they look at issues around complaints from the public, copyright, construction, employee grievances, employee discipline and discharge, employee discrimination, Equal Access Act. Ethics issues, Family Medical Leave Act, First Amendment, homeless students, land acquisition. And it goes on and on. I say all that to say, this really falls into a lot of the responsibilities of administration, not. Of the board. So I am concerned that even when you try to go out with a new RFP, you won't have a firm that's going to meet all of this. The criteria that's here. That's just to name a few. I stopped just because I could be, we could be here all night. So really, it is why we said in our recommendation, consider a different set of people to review the three. Look at consensus scoring, allow someone who has a legal background to sit on and look at it. I mean, it. Before you discount the other three, and I don't know any of the other three.
A question, um, when we put out the R, this RFP. Um, and procurement that it, those that submitted the proposals. There were only four companies that responded. Am I correct, Dr. Golson?
Correct. All of them we moved forward to you on.
Correct. So I'm just trying to figure out or, or understand why we would think. That with these for, only four firms responded to that first RFP. We would think that there are going to be some others out there that will respond to, uh, another RFP. Uh, my other understanding in talking to procurement is that, uh, with the current RFP. We would have, we, board members would have to indicate. Before we go into another RFP, we'd have to cancel out the current RFP. And, uh, determine that, um, those companies were either ineligible or did not meet our requirements. Now, if that's the case, then those companies could seek out a protest. Am I correct?
That is correct. That's why we said, well, you go back and reevaluate those three with a different panel.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Board Member Boozer Struther, I see your hand next.
Yeah, I see Mr. Shelton's hands.
Okay, Mr. Shelton.
Something to advise.
I, I just wanted to ask, I guess, Mr. Burrows and perhaps Ms. Ahmad too. I think Mr. Burrows started to articulate what the recommendations of the committee were. So my question, I go back, is it possible to articulate those such that they are in fact motions? Maybe you have something that we can take. Maybe you have something that we can take some action on, but I'd get to hear anybody articulate exactly what the recommendations of the committee were. I thought Mr. Burrows started to do that.
Miss Ahmad. Reddit.
Can, can you specifically say what you want the body to do? Because without the body knowing what you want us to do, we could be here for quite some time. Maybe we can do what you want us to do, but we don't. I haven't figured it out. Maybe the rest of you know. What is it specifically you want us to do?
Uh, Board Member Boozer Strutter, I see you waving your hand and you are next.
I mean, I, I think we're responding to a report at this point in time in the discussion because many of us were not in the room and, and I, I do again want to say, I do not feel like we've exactly what Board Member Mickens Murray is saying, Board Member Williams, we have not finished the legal aspects of this original RFP and the realities of the firms available that have education law in the state of Maryland are limited and we need to look at those full range of services as Dr. Goldson explained. So I don't think we have fully seen through our legal obligations on the first RFP. And then also, uh, I think Mr. Shelton, she, the point is, I'm seeing a report that is placing me on a committee and no one has asked me. And I need to inform my colleagues that I will not, uh, uh, to remove me from that consideration that I am informing you that I am unable to, to do that. So that is the point where, where I am in this process.
Uh, Board Member Boozer Strutter, that was just a recommendation that Board Member Ahmed brought to the committee. And as I indicated before, this would be an ad hoc committee that would have to be formed. And that the chair has the, uh, authority to appoint uh, members to an ad hoc committee without approval from the board. So, um, it's not that, that was just a, a recommendation, um, from Board Member Ahmed. However, the final ad hoc committee selection would come from the board chair.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Board Member, um, Mickens Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I know this is my second round. So I will just say a statement first and then I'll read something from one of these, uh, proposals. I had not read all of the proposals when I first came on this board. I took the time to read them all after I figured out how important this is to everybody and how emotionally connected everybody is to this issue. Now, the, the law firm that I am talking about is not the law firm that has, had, that has been entertained before. But what they have is they have an education practice. And then on page eight of the proposal, it says, uh, education.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, what?
No, you didn't. Someone is calling a point of order.
Yeah, I, I just want to, um, sorry about that, Ms. Mickens Murray. I just want to make sure that normally, uh, the contents of these RFPs are, are sealed, that they're confidential until, um, I just want to, we're lea-, I, I'm not sure. I just want to raise it legally because.
No, I appreciate that. I do not want to get in any trouble, so I'll just paraphrase. They have a whole section on education law. They have worked with the entire state of Maryland. Most of their services is within the state of Maryland with universities, uh, community colleges and even high schools. So all I am saying is we need to relook at the RFP, I mean, at the proposals that we have left on these RFPs because I'm not an expert, but I can see that we could have some problems down the road if education law is the reason you want to go out for a new RFP. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Murray. Uh, Board Member Adam Stafford.
Yeah, I, I just think that for reasons for situations like this, this is why we have board policies to help guide us when we come to a crossroads like this. Board policy three, three, two, three says, if for any reason the bid cannot be awarded to the lowest responsive qualified bidder, um, the awarding of the contract shall be approved by the Board of Education. The superintendent, CEO shall fully advise the board as to the reasons why this person did not, with the, the non-award of the lowest qualified bidder. They have done that. They have, you know, informed us as to why this group didn't win. The board can determine the contract. And I mean, I don't, it doesn't say anything about reevaluating the other bidders. I mean, I am a contractor. I've never heard of this in my life. I, so I'm just trying to understand where that notion is coming from. It feels like this is made up. Um, and so what I would say is I think that what we need to do now is just go forward with the recommendations. And I mean, we can still solve the issue of permanent legal counsel, but we have an immediate need right now. Like, we immediately need to deal with the issues of appeals. So maybe we can just vote on that particular issue and then come back to the, the larger issue, but we just cannot go another month without dealing with the issues of appeals.
Well, we've gone all these mu-, uh, I apologize. I should turn my mic off. I, I have to, uh, call on, I, I apologize, Board Member, um, Adam Stafford. I, I really apologize. Your point is duly noted. However, we're still trying to bring clarification to what we're going to do about the RFP that's out there. Yes, we do have work that's needed. And there is the option of, um, possibly getting, uh, some legal for somebody to come in to do appeals. Um, the con-, concern right now is that we're still hanging on a RFP with no resolution to where we're going to go with that and the, uh, end result of, uh, uh, no action or action to dissolve it and try to move forward to another RFP. And the repercussions we may as a board have to face because of the, uh, cancellation of the first RFP. Uh, I would think that, um, and my suggestion, Dr. Goldson, is that this board have a, um, um, I'll call it a meeting workshop with, about the whole procurement process because I just don't see where, um, there's a lot of understanding relative to how this process is working, how it works, and where it's going to, what, what's going to happen with, um, with this board in terms of the decision it makes relative to closing out the first RFP and moving towards a second one. And you've already clarified that there could be some, uh, some problems for, uh, canceling out the, uh, first RFP. All right. So with that, I see, uh, Board Member Williams, your hand was next.
Thank you. Um, I think that Board Member Adam Stafford hit on a good point. I believe, uh, and I'm paraphrasing, um, she said, the lowest qualified bidder. And if someone is, is, becomes unqualified, then the next bidder would, the next bidder, if we were looking at just proposals or just dollars that they're proposing, they're bidding, then yes, we would just go to the next lowest qualified bidder. But in this case, because we're talking about a technical score and providing professional services, the qualification is based on their technical score. And so because the next, um, highest score who was, uh, reviewed was the next firm and the first firm is discounted or disqualified, we, the, 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 the way the process works in procurement, and again, I have to say, I have, I ran the procurement office in a whole county for years. And so I'm coming here with not just assuming or trying to fit a, a square peg in a circle. I'm coming with the experience knowing that, one, this is a technical evaluation that we reviewed and then we looked at the, the dollars that they proposed as an hourly rate. And second, with that experience, because that first firm was disqualified, you would automatically go to the next qualified firm. And so I don't understand why we're making this so complicated and, and, and trying to find a way to make this work. But if we're not careful, we begin to look as, as though we are trying to move the school system to selecting or, or giving a contract to a, to some firm. So I think we have to be very, very careful in what we're doing before we get ourselves in, in some kind of legal trouble without having a legal counsel onboard. So I think Adam Ste-, Ms., uh, Board Member Adam Stafford said in her, in, in her statement, the lowest qualified uh, bidder. And please confirm if that's what you stated in the, in the policy. Ms. Adam Stafford.
You know, I think, yes, it's policy three, three, two, three, but I think that what it's happening is that you're saying that this firm was disqualified during the RFP process, which would make your statements correct. This firm, after it had been voted on by the public and was in the final stages, then they said, oh, we did this process wrong. We did not vet them properly. And so that is different than saying that somebody is disqualified in an RFP process. So, I mean, this whole entire process has been messed up.
No, no. So let me, let me, uh, just clarify something really quickly, and I did hear that the buzzer go off. There is a process of receiving the bids. There is a process of reviewing and selecting the, the award, and then there is a process of awarding the contract. When you're going through awarding the contract.
Somebody, please turn your mics off.
When you are, when you are going through the process of awarding the contract, there are things that you have to do and interact with that contractor. And it is in that phase of the, of the selection and award process, had nothing to do with the bid we're coming in or the review of those bids, it has something to do with contracting, pulling in the contract. So that is, there is a difference. And, and so that's why I'm, I'm trying to explain it in as elementary terms as possible without going into the details, but I think the chair is right.
I'm a contractor. You don't have to explain it in elementary terms to me.
Were you a, a, a person who is responsible for awarding contracts? There is a difference.
I know when you lose a contract, if you lose a contract, then it doesn't automatically just open up again for everyone to say, we're going to reconsider it. We actually awarded a group a contract. And then after we awarded it to them, we said, hey, wait, we actually messed up on the RFP process.
But that is, that is a different conversation. And so unless you have had, um, education in procurement.
It's okay. I'm not, you don't need to go into this, but I think other people have their hands up.
Adam Stafford, you're out of order right now. Well, Board Member Williams still has the floor.
I agree with the chair that we need to have a, a.
One of order.
Thank you. Board Member, um, Queen, Queen.
Thank you so very much. Um, you guys, it's been a long night. It's eleven o'clock, and I know you all feeling it, but I'm telling you, I got to bring a little humor to this right now. Um, I'll find you guys a lawyer, an educational lawyer. And I don't really expect you to answer this because it's really a joke. I'm like telling you, I got a break. I think laughter is good for the show, um, for the soul. But Mr. Shelton, you want to be our lawyer?
Oh, no.
I didn't want you to answer it. But I just wanted to bring a little laughter because it's been a long night and I can see a lot of you guys are getting really tense. I'm really tense, and I just want you guys just to loosen up and realize that, you know, I know we got to go on and really be serious about finding a lawyer. Um, but let's continue to be just a little bit more professional. And remember, it's really about our students and finding that attorney who not only really wants to do it, but somebody have the heart of putting out scholars in our school system first. And I know some of us may want this person, that person, and then some are saying, no, it's not about that. But it is about one of the statements that was said tonight. It has been a long time. It has been a lot of discussion. Um, and, and we can see that there are a lot of tension, but the main thing is we have to find an attorney, you guys. So I just want you to stay focused on what it really is about. It's about us finding the attorney for French Georgia County Public Schools, the scholars in the system. So thank you.
Can I say something, Ms. Queen? And I know you, you were a joke. One of the things that all of us need to be concerned about are professional reputations. And one of the things, quite frankly, I'm concerned about is my professional reputation. You know, I can't afford to come on TV and look like Boo Boo the Fool because I can make a living. And none of you, quite frankly, can come on TV and look like Boo Boo the Fool. When I hear, when people talk about this board, that's what they think of you. That's what they think of all of us. You've had a, uh, attorney, because I saw it on the website, who just quit in the middle of a meeting. I've come very close to just quitting in the middle of a meeting. My point is, most professional people would not want to work with this board because you don't put, conduct yourself in a professional manner. You need to, to learn to love one another and not be so at one another's throats all the time. And then you can act professional. But until you guys start to have some respect for one another and not have all this ego stuff going around, you never will get to the point where you want to be. I came back because I think every one of you really has the children in your heart. I really believe that. I believe everybody in this room wants to do what's best for the kids. But some of that is you got to let some of your own ego go. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Uh, Board Member Burrows.
Uh, question, uh, for Mr. Shelton. Uh, w- would it be your recommendation to make these motions, uh, kind of one by one, just so that it's clear for everyone? I know you mentioned that earlier.
Yeah, the other thing I thought, Mr. Burrows, I, I thought, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to answer your question.
Okay.
I think Dr. Miller is absolutely correct. An ad hoc committee needs to be appointed by her. I thought, quite frankly, well, you guys, well, let me finish. I think when you guys left out here last time, you guys were in fact an ad hoc committee, uh, is what I thought. But maybe that's not with Dr. Miller's understanding. But that committee needs to be given specific tasking. This is your job. And when you come back, this is what we've done. And then you report it to the body and the body votes it up or down. If you've done something that you feel that the body can consider and voted up and down, then I'm expecting you to articulate what that is, and we'll just rock and roll.
Okay. Um, so with that being said, um, just to be very clear, I'd like to move that the Office of Procurement contact all firms, all MAVE-approved firms, to see which ones would be available to provide temporary services to the board regarding student appeals, labor, employee appeals, and labor union appeals only. The Office of Procurement will then select a qualified firm that can start as soon as possible. Uh, in the case that the Office of Procurement cannot find a suitable qualified MAVE-approved vendor by September fifteenth, the board's hearing examiners, who are already on contract with the board, will be authorized to provide legal counsel services to the board regarding student appeals, employee appeals, and labor union appeals only.
But let me stop you there, Mr. Burrows. What I would suggest you do is you stop your motion at the point where you said the, that the, uh, Board of Procurement approved, made, approved, for firms and stop there because you can't make a motion contingent on something. You can't say it's going to do this, but if it doesn't happen that way, then this is going to happen. So the first part of your motion was beautiful, but you went off.
Okay, I will restate, I will restate my, um, my motion. Um, I move that the Office of Procurement should contact and, and, uh, I see. Um, and I'm going to try to go.
No, go ahead. Your first part was beautiful. You just kept going.
Okay. Uh, I move that the Office of Procurement will contact all firms that are not currently working with PGCPS board or PGCPS from the MAVE-approved vendor list to see which ones would be available to provide temporary legal services to the board regarding student appeals, labor, employee appeals, and labor union appeals only. And the board would authorize the procurement department to select a qualified firm that will start as soon as possible. Was that okay, Mr. Shelton?
Sounded great to me.
Okay, I'd like to call for the vote.
Any discussion? No discussion. Uh, I see Board Member Williams.
I'm just a little concerned about that, um, um, request because it says. He said something about the procurement will select firms and go out and, and look for those firms and reach out to them. There is a, we're, 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 it sounds like we're sort of circumventing the procurement process by saying they're gonna go out and, and do this. And. We're gonna give them the appeals. We don't know if those appeals are gonna surpass the, the, the minimum, the maximum twenty-five thousand dollars. We don't know. He took out the word made, which means he can go to any way, the, uh, procurement can go to any firm in the, in the county.
No, I said made.
He said made. Excuse me. He did say made.
Okay, I must have missed that. It is made.
He did. He started out with made, that they would go to made and, uh, uh, check with each, uh, any lawyers, uh, un. That made.
That's not doing business with the, with the, um, system.
Yes. Well, he didn't say that, but, uh, I'm sure made. Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Well, let me say this before we go any further. The only people who should be allowed to speak at this point is if you don't understand the motion, if you don't understand the motion. Then you keep rocking and rolling. You just can't, you know. It's time for the vote. But if you don't understand the motion, raise your hand and get clarification.
Board Member Williams, your hand is still up. Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor of the motion to get, uh, get procurement. To contact made and correct me if I'm misrepresenting the motion. Procurement will contact made. Uh, to get, uh, recommendations of lawyers and they will select one. That can come to our board and take care of appeals and labor, labor and employment issues. Is that correct, Mr. Burrows?
Yes, procurement will contact all of the MAB approved firms. Uh, that are not doing business with the school system. Um, and to see which ones can provide. The board services specifically with student appeals, labor employee appeals. Uh, labor union appeals and then select a firm to start appeals as soon as possible.
Mr. Burrows, you seem to have that written in front of you. Is that true?
Uh, yes.
Okay, can you get that writing to, uh, Ms. Berkeley?
Yes, I can after the meeting. Sure.
Okay. Just so, she's a second. Just so long as we know what we doing.
Point of order, this was already sent out to all board members as well as board staff.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I have it already.
Okay.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion, Board Member Adam Stafford.
He stated earlier that, that contacting made vendors that are not working with the board or PGCPS.
He did restate that.
That's what he said. No, he just said PG, he just said the school system just now.
All in favor of Mr. Burrows' motion.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, any abstentions?
You don't have to call for a count unless somebody calls for.
I'm gonna call for a roll call. Ms. Berkeley?
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Yes.
Mrs. Emmett?
Yes.
Ms. Boozer Struthen?
Yes.
Mr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yeah.
Mrs. Mickens Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Montero? Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Queen?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine? Mr. Valentine?
Sorry, I'm, uh, aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is a consensus vote. And so we will, uh, Dr. Where's Dr. Golson? I don't see her right now. Is she still on? Dr. Golson?
I'm here.
Okay, um, the vote is that procurement and, um. Will follow up with made to, uh, secure. Um, a firm to come and do the here, well, those things that were mentioned in this motion. Now, um, so that, that, that's a vote that's been taken and everybody approved. We still have the RFP hanging out there. So. I'm, it's eleven o'clock. I mean, it's after eleven. I'm going to, um. Take, um. Judy, uh, Board Member. It's late. Board Member Mickens Murray, your hand is up.
Yes, um, I make a motion that we, uh. Yeah, to get the words right. It's been a long night. I make a motion that we, um. Use the same. Use the same folks who scored, they use the same board members who scored the first, uh, RFP. And include the general counsel and somewhere for procurement. To reevaluate the, not re-score, I'm sorry, this vote, to reevaluate the remaining three firms. For, uh, that's it. Thank you.
It has been moved in second that the original ad hoc committee reconvene. With general counsel and procurement. To review the three remaining. Uh, uh, RFP, um, RFPs, uh, from those three firms that submitted bids. And to. Come back with a recommendation from the ad hoc committee, uh, for a permanent, for, for a permanent, uh, legal counsel. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you.
Did you get a second?
Yes.
It has been moved in second. That the original. Ad hoc committee. We've returned, review all the, the three remaining law firms. Uh, and we will add the general counsel and procurement personnel. In the review and, uh, we, I mean, well. Evaluate the, the three and then, um, come out with a permanent legal counsel service. Am I correct?
Yes.
All in, any discussion?
Can you call the roll?
All in favor, Ms. Berkeley, please call the roll.
Well, Mrs. Shelton had his hand up.
Yeah, I, I didn't understand. I thought the motion was just that these people come back to this body with a recommendation. But you're, the way you stated, Dr. Miller, was that they, they would go ahead and make a decision. And I don't care which way you do it, but make sure it's clear. Either they're gonna make a recommendation to this body. After they do the review and this body's gonna have to make a decision. Are those people gonna make their own decision?
No, we can't, uh, well, thank you for bringing that to my attention, Mr. Shelton. The ad hoc committee will, will make a decision based on the evaluations, but they will bring it back. To the board as a recommendation to be voted on.
Okay.
Does that, is that clear?
Yeah, that's fine. If that, if all committees do is make recommendations and the body has to accept it one way or the other. So that's fine.
Roll, roll call, Ms., um, Berkeley?
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Adam Stafford?
No.
Mrs. Emmett?
No.
Ms. Boozer Struthen?
Yes.
Mr. Burrows?
No.
Uh, can Mr. Samara Ruiz vote on this particular item?
Um. It's a contract. Well, no, it's not a contract. Let's come back to him. I'm not sure.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mrs. Mickens Murray?
Yes. I said yes.
I, I know. Um, I was calling Mr. Murray.
No.
Thank you. Mrs. Queen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Six ayes, six nays, one absent. And did you, uh, is the student board member allowed to vote?
I believe he is.
Well, I, I think it's gonna be academic. There's no way you're gonna get to eight.
Right. I agree.
Okay.
The motion fails.
Sorry.
Um. Board Member Burrows.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, and, and I do want to acknowledge, um, that the board, you know, we were able to come together and hopefully we'll have someone doing the pills. Next week. So I did want to highlight that in the spirit of Board Member Queen who likes to. Lighten the mood. Um, but I do have a motion. Um, I move that, um. The Office of Procurement will conduct. An entirely new RFP process. Uh, which will take approximately seventy-five days to complete. At the new firm, um, and have a new firm awarded a contract. The RFP should. Be out for solicitation for thirty days. Administration will provide clarity in the new RFP on the requirements. Of education law experience and the new firms. That are eligible for consideration. The hiring panel should consist of a completely new group of three board members. Approved by the board. Yes, so that's my motion.
I, I'd like to make a, a amendment to your motion.
Seconded. Huh? His motion hasn't been seconded, so.
Oh, not, well, in his statement, he's asking us to approve, the, the board approved. Your, uh, and it's circumventing the role or diminish, uh, uh. Circumventing the authority of the chair to appoint an ad hoc committee. So, uh, now we're talking about violating our own bylaws and a policy. So I just want to put that on the record.
Whi- which bylaw are you referencing?
I don't have them in front of me, but I know bylaws do state that the chair has the authority to select ad hoc committees. And does not need the approval of the board.
Mr. Burrows, once again, you started out great, but when you added all that other stuff in there, here's what I think you want to do. You just want to have the procurement people review the R, RFPs again. That's what you want, right?
No, that's not, that's not my motion. My motion is to start the RFP process over. Um, I, I, I can read you the motion. Hopefully, maybe you can.
Yeah, I mean, couldn't you just say, I want the RFP process started again? That's all you need to say.
I would like to, thank you. I will clarify the motion. Oh, I, I will, if you could help me with the motion, Mr. Shelton.
No, he can't.
No, he can't.
No, he can't.
Well, no, the parliamentarian can help you state a motion. That's what I'm here for. I'm trying to get us out of here. I can't tell you the way to vote, but I can certainly tell you how to phrase a motion. You let me know what you want and I'll put a motion on the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parliamentarian. Uh, I would like to start the RFP process over. And. Uh, and, and have the board appoint three members. Um, to do that process.
Now, you run into problem with the, that board appointed the three members because the chairman has pointed out to you, that's what hurt purview to appoint the committee. So I move to start the RFP process again. What else do you want to do?
Uh, Mr. Shelton, I. I'm looking in all the policies in the middle of this meeting. There's not a single policy that I can find that gives the chair the sole discretion to appoint ad hoc committees. I do believe the board has the authority to appoint, and I have.
What I'm telling you is the rules of parliamentary procedure give the chairperson the authority to appoint.
Committees, right.
And I can tell you that what supersedes parliamentary procedure is board policy.
Pardon me?
Board policy supersedes parliamentary procedure.
Well, but do you find something specifically in board policy that says the chairman doesn't have the authority to appoint ad hoc committees? If you find something there that's contrary to parliamentary procedure, you got a point, but there's nothing there contrary to parliamentary procedure. You're just trying to bring it in there. Parliamentary procedure says the chairperson makes ad hoc committees.
I'm not sure that you know that to be the case because I don't know that you read.
But I'm not making the argument. If you're making the argument, there's something in the policy that is diametrically opposed to the rules of parliamentary procedure, you need to show me what it is. But I don't think you have a fine.
My motion will stand as.
Point of order, Mr. Shaw, I have it up. It, it says in, in Board Policy ninety-two ten that the chair, by direction of the board, may appoint committees. And so this is literally direction of the board that we're discussing right now.
May appoint. But there's other, with under duties and responsibilities of the chair, it says the chair appoints ad hoc committees. And I'm going to find that as soon as I can go through my files. So.
Dr. Golson has something that you would like to say. Can she speak, Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Golson.
I'm just asking before y'all vote on it, what are you doing with the other three?
Well, for the record, it appears that our board, um, the way the vote is going and the decision making. This board is headed down and we've been warned, um, and advised by our colleagues. Who have, uh, experience in the area of procurement. That we're setting this board up. It's not just, um, uh, uh, those who oppose or those who are against. It is the whole board that's being set up. For, um. Possibilities of, uh, um, liability or, um.
Can I make a point? And then I'm, I'm gonna go home for. I'm looking at the bylaw you're talking about. And, and Dr. Miller is absolutely correct. It says that the chair, by direction from the board, may appoint committees of board staff members to study specific projects. The board can direct the chairman to appoint certain committees. Tell me where it says in there that she does not have the authority to appoint it. That's what I'm telling you. The rules of procedure, parliamentary procedure says she appoints ad hoc committees. This doesn't say anything about ad hoc committees. It talks about committees. So we, we can't keep.
About a direction.
Yeah, but I didn't actually, she, it's, it's real simple. Here's what I'm saying. You can say, chairman, we want you to appoint a committee to study whether or not we're gonna buy a lot more. You can do that. But there's nothing in here that says that she cannot by her own authority appoint an ad hoc committee.
Point of order.
The rules of parliamentary procedure says she can do that.
And, and are you, are you, are you telling this, uh, body that the Board of Education does not have the authority to appoint a committee?
That's right.
We talked about ad hoc committees and what I'm telling you is the rules of parliamentary procedure give only the chairperson the authority to appoint an ad hoc committee. I'm not gonna come in here and debate parliamentary procedure with you guys every night. I probably just won't come back. But at some point you got to accept, here, here's what I do. I'm like a referee. I call the balls and the strikes. I don't care who wins the game. But you got to accept somebody's ability to call the balls and strikes, or you're gonna be here all night questioning everything is done. I'm telling you, she appoints an ad hoc committee. I'm telling you that provision you read in the bylaw doesn't keep her from appointing an ad hoc committee. I'm trying to get you where you want to go, Mr. Burrow. I had you halfway there.
Mr. Shelton, I'm just, Miss Board Member Queen, Dr. Miller, can I just ask for a clarification to Mr. Shelton? You just said by direction of the board, so we have to direct her to do that. I'm just.
No, you don't have to do anything. It says the chair, by direction from the board, may. appoint committee of a board, blah, blah, blah. So you don't have to direct her to do anything. But again, I give you the example. If you want to study whether or not you're gonna buy a lawn mower, you may direct the chairperson to appoint the committee, but she's still the one who does the appoint. You know, you keep arguing that she doesn't do the appointment. She either does the appointment because the rules of parliamentary procedure give her the authority, or the board may direct her to appoint a committee, but still, she's the one that appoints the committee. That's the argument. It's her and her alone. All right, you guys.
So I have a motion on the floor.
Well, you never completed a motion.
Yeah, my motion is to restart the RFP process and to have the RFP and to have the that committee be determined by the Board of Education. That is my motion.
And what I was trying to tell you, Mr. Burrows, I think your motion is contrary to the rules of parliamentary procedure because you're trying to usurp the chairperson's authority to appoint an ad hoc committee. But that's my opinion. You know, you guys can accept my opinion or reject it. You know, I haven't heard a second to your motion, quite frankly.
Ms. Ahmed seconded it three different times.
Three times, three times I've seconded this motion.
You couldn't, you couldn't have accepted it three times because that's the first time he's stated from beginning to end. But if that's your motion, it's been seconded.
I have, there's some questions on the floor, Madam Chair, woman.
Board member Mickens-Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We school board members have a fiduciary responsibility to guard against any deliberate actions that cause a litigation against the French Georgia County School System. So I'm asking my colleagues to please, please, we must deal with that RFP. What is your pleasure before you act on this motion? Thank you.
Madam, would you like the vice chair to call on the next person?
Yes, because I'm still looking for this.
Yes. Board member Boozer Struthers, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Williams. Again, I got a second. Board member Mickens-Murray, we have to go back to this original process to not be in legal jeopardy, and we've heard it over and over this evening, and our CEO has advised us, and we I would have made a motion that Chair Miller, you just appoint a new group if this group was unwilling to see through this RFP. But that has to be seen, seen through. We, we know, we've been advised the legal jeopardy of this, and I don't, I don't understand the resistance to just seeing it through, even, even if the chair has to appoint new people if the current group doesn't want to see it through. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer Struthers. Board member Ahmed.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Colleagues, there was a point that was brought forward by Board Member Adam Stafford earlier on in this conversation that I wanted to revisit because I thought it was a very good point, and it addressed the concerns of some other colleagues on this board. The process was done the moment that we awarded the contract. The fact that it was later found that by administration that he was allegedly ineligible is after the fact. We awarded the contract, and from my perspective, the process is closed once we complete and get to that awarding of contract. And so I wanted to bring that up because I thought that that was a very good point that was brought forward, and that makes sense to me. I also wanted to note, just from Mr. Shelton, we have precedent of the board vote. What we're talking about right now is a hiring panel. And we have precedent by the board under previous board legal counsel in which the board voted on who they wanted to be on hiring, who we wanted to be on hiring panels for previous positions. And so there is that precedent has been set. This is not something that's coming out of the blue, but I did want to note that as well. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Board member Adam.
You know, I'm hearing a lot of discussion about the legal jeopardy that we would be in by not considering the firms that weren't awarded. But I would just like to encourage folks to think about the legal risk we open ourselves up to with the fact that we selected a firm and awarded them a contract and then determined that they were, yes, we did vote to, we voted to award them the contract, and then they began to go through that process. And then for us to then say, oh, in the RFP process, there were some problems, there were some issues that, you know, are on us, and then open back up the, the selection process to those that did not win the bid. That is definitely opening us up to be sued by the person who actually won the contract. And I can say this as someone who consistently, you know, goes for RFPs through my company, when you do not win, it is not a standard operating procedure or a common practice for then, even if they're on the behalf of the contracting organization, if there is any problem with the RFP process, they're not going to then say, oh, everyone who was, was not awarded, now you have an equal shot. You know, that entire process was compromised. And so that, that is what we're saying here. And so I'm not really understanding where the legal sort of, you know, discussion is coming from. And, you know, perhaps what we need to do is now that we've voted to have a MAB approved vendor come in to do our appeals work, we can bring them in for a special meeting to just advise us on this, on what we should do regarding this very specific issue. Because it seems as though we, we're not legal scholars here, and so there, on both sides, people don't understand necessarily what are the ramifications of opening back up a process by which we already voted on awarding a contract to someone.
Thank you, Ms. Adam Stafford. Board member Queen.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, woman. I'm not gonna act like I know anything about RFPs or a lot about contracts, but I do can give you an example, a couple of things in reality of life. I'd go out and buy, and this back in the day, you know, it's old because it was a Nissan Quest. And I bought his car, signed the contract for the car, and drive the car off the lot. Within a week, the engine go bad on the car. Doesn't mean that Nissan's not gonna be responsible for their car. Something wrong with it, and they have to hold responsibility. So when we find something is wrong with things, then, yes, you can pull back on certain things. It's no different if I go out here and decide to put a roof on and I, you know, I say to this contract, okay, maybe I'm gonna use you, but I have so many days, and I don't know how RFP, but you still have so much time. And I find out, no, maybe you're not the best company. I'm pulling back on my contract. I'm gonna use somebody else. We have that option. But what I do see a problem with is that we have to decide what we're gonna do. Are we gonna pull back and say, hey, and then I heard our CEO, and I'm gonna say this as I close, we always say we voted on a CEO. I think we voted on unanimously for the people who was on the board. And she said to us tonight, you guys, that we have to make a decision. What are we gonna do about the ones we have already out there? You know, she said that to us, and then it was stated by other people too. We have to make that decision. If we decide we're not gonna use them, then that vote needs to be decided before we even talk about going out to look for someone else or using another firm. But we still haven't made a decision to say, hey, we're gonna close out the RFP process that we have, and we're gonna go get a new process. I just think we just need to do everything in decent and order, but that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. Board member Mickens-Murray.
Thank you. To my colleague Shayla Adam Stafford, we never let the contract because procurement never signed it. So that contract was not, yes, the board voted on it, but it was never let because it was never signed. So, and, and when we voted a few minutes ago on colleague Burrows' motion, we just can't add duties. We limited the services of MAB to doing appeals. So we can't go back now and say, okay, Laura, you can come in and do this for us and do that for us. It doesn't work like that. It really does not work like that. All I'm trying to do is keep us out of jeopardy. That's all. That's all.
Thank you, Board Member Mickens-Murray. Madam Chair, your hand is up.
I just had a thought that if there was in a race and participant A came in first and later was found to have been on steroids and disqualified, they could not call another race. It would go to the second person, the person who came in second. That, I just, I just had a thought about that. So I don't, you know, everybody has their own understanding of how this process should go. So that's something to think about, too.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I'm not sure if hands are still left up or if, are you? Yes. And Mickens-Murray is, okay, thank you. And Madam Chair, would you take down your hand? Thank you. Board member Adam Stafford.
So Chair Miller, the problem I would say with that analogy would be it isn't that the runner was on steroids, and that's why they were disqualified. They were disqualified because they were told they were running a hundred, a two-hundred meter dash when they were really running a one-hundred meter dash. Whereas the parameters of their rates were incorrect from the beginning. And that is what happened here, is that we have, we have come to a consensus as a board that the, the original set of, of requirements, that the vetting that needed to have happened, apparent that did not happen. And so, you know, what, what I'd like to say is, you know, to remember Mickens-Murray, you know, you know, in thinking about, you know, the, the legal problems that we could possibly open ourselves up to, and you're saying that we can't ask the person that comes in from MAB to serve in another capacity for us. You know, we have hired a parliamentarian, and from what I'm understanding, you know, the board chair is hiring him on like an hourly basis for, you know, different, for an ad hoc purpose. We have never seen his contract, but she is hiring him for a set purpose. And once someone is procured to work with us, I believe, and if someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but that is under the discretion of the chair, that they can use, you know, people that have gone through the procurement process to do other, you know, items for us as a board, as needed. That, I think that is the whole premise that we're dealing with, with this under twenty-five thousand dollar threshold. And so another item that I have brought up to this committee and to the board is that, you know, a possibility could be possibly creating a pool of qualified bidders like the federal government, where these people have gone through the process, they've gone through procurement, and we select from a pool of qualified bidders, like many other government organizations do. But to, I think that honestly, what we, I think we have made some incremental steps. You know, I'm moving that we table this until we have an actual legal opinion on what we, can advise us on what to do next.
Madam Chair, since she directed a question to me, I just want to say this. The motion that Mr. Burrows put on the table limited the role. He was very clear, limited the role of the MAB attorney that procurement will seek for us. Now, he can, I guess we can go back and redo all of that. Mr. Parliamentarian can help us with that. All I am saying is that we make decisions impulsively. It's starting to appear like we just make impulsive decisions. No law firm is going to want to work for us if we don't have a basis for the decisions that we make. That's all I'm offering. Thank you, Board Member Mickens-Murray, for responding to the question directed your way. We, I see Board Member Murray, Murray's hand up. Mr. Shelton, are you keeping track of the, the people that are speaking on this discussion? I've lost track. And I know, Mr. Murray, this is the first time for me. Okay. I know this is Mr. Murray's first time speaking, so, Mr. Murray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Shelton, I found the, the section in Robert's Rules of Order under Appointment of Committees, fifty, colon, eleven, Methods of Appointment, says the method can be decided by unanimous consent or by majority vote at the time the committee is appointed. Are you familiar with that?
Well, let me find the section, you know, and I. I've got the book in front of me. You just told me, let me go through it. Fifty-eleven.
That's the one.
Okay. Now, tell me what you're reading.
It says that at the time of making the committee, the, the body can by majority vote.
While he's looking that up, do you have any other comments while he's looking that up, Mr. Murray?
No, you can keep going if we can come back to him once he finds it.
And next would be Board Member Burrows, if that is proper. Ms. Berkeley?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm the, Mr. Murray, Murray, you notice in the first sentence, it says, in an assembly, an organization that has not prescribed in its bylaws, or rules how the members, you have got any bylaws. That's why I don't want to work with you guys. You're constantly challenging everything I tell you. I don't mind. I really lost my patience. I hate to say that, but you're constantly challenging everything I tell you. You wasting your time paying me the money to do it. Let somebody else do it.
I didn't agree.
If it's not in the bylaws, that's the way you do it. It's in your bylaws, and somebody, one of you guys just read it that says that the chairman will appoint these committees. I don't have the time or the patience to put up with this. I'm sorry. I read the section. I will not say another word. I'm sorry. Here's another problem. I'm gonna say this. You guys keep pulling out something. Hell, I've been in parliamentary procedure since nineteen seventy-two. I needed to graduate from Western Kentucky University. I was two hours short, short to graduate. I took a course in parliamentary procedure. They got me to two hours to graduate, and I've been studying parliamentary procedure since nineteen seventy-two. You know, I can't remember everything and book and all that, you know. It's, it's like you know how to make a cake. You know you know how to make a cake. But if you had to go back and pull the exact point and preference at that particular time, sometimes you do it. Hell, I used to be a military judge. You gotta make decisions in court martial. You make them right there. If I had to go back to the exact manual and reference at that particular point in time, I'd be going back and forth like I am now. But the point is, the judge calls the balls and strikes. The parliamentarian calls the balls and strikes. The mediator calls the balls and strikes. You can't call the balls and strikes when everybody gonna pull this out and pull it out. You gotta, you got.
Mr. Sheldon, a point of clarification. From my recollection, you had asked if there's anything that a board member can find regarding this matter to share that information. And what I'm hearing is Mr. Murray providing with that information. So I don't think, you know, I just wanna.
I have a completely different interpretation of what Mr. Murray is presenting than he does. It clearly says to me that if it's not in the bylaws, then that's the way you'll do it. But it's in the bylaws here. I apologize to Mr. Murray. Another problem I have, quite frankly, with a number of you folk, hell, the first time I seen your face in like three or four meetings, you guys need to come on, first man to man, let's have a conversation. But you, she's right. You pulled something out. I disagree with your interpretation of it, but you're more than welcome to have your own interpretation. I'm not actually to accept mine.
I appreciate it, and I think Mr. Burrows' motion is still on the floor and seconded. Thank you.
Mr. Burrows, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I just want to just, just because I have the policy, the bylaw in front of me, says the chair, by direction from the board, may appoint committees of the board, may appoint committees of the board and/or staff members to study specific projects. The chair, by direction from the board, may appoint committees of the board or staff members to study specific projects. or staff members to study specific projects. It does not say that the chair can appoint ad hoc committees whenever, however, with whomever. That's not what it says. This is very specific about studying projects. And so, I just wanted to say that for the public.
This is a project. This is a project.
Madam Chair, if I can retain the floor. End of my time. No problem. And if I can also reclaim my time. And so, I, maybe a compromise could be having the original committee, when procurement contacts all of the MAB-approved vendors, no, asks them if they're interested in being our permanent counsel, and then have the committee interview and select from that group.
Can, can I respond? And I'll respond much more civil.
Yes, you may have the floor, Mr. Sheldon.
Much more civil. Mr. Burrows, you're right in your reading of the bylaw. In fact, I've got it right here because we opened it maybe fifteen minutes ago when it first came up. I'm reading the exact same thing you do. It says the chair, by direction from the board, may appoint. The chair may do something. But your position was talking about what the chair can't do. And that's what I asked. Find me something in the bylaws that says the chair cannot appoint an ad hoc committee. I'm telling you, the rules of parliamentary procedure says that she can. This is talking about other stuff as far as I'm concerned. And even if this is talking about the exact same thing, this is saying that the board may appoint a committee, but you want to argue that this language that says the board may appoint committee also gives you the authority to say she cannot appoint a committee.
No, no, Mr. Sheldon, what Mr. Murray read said something, and Mr. Murray, if you have it in front of you, he, he reads, or if you can read that provision that, 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 that he referenced. I believe Mr. Mer-
Roberts' Rules of Order?
Yeah. If you could read that again for me.
Yep. It says that, in an assembly or organization that has not prescribed in its bylaws or rules, how the members of its committee shall be selected, the method can be decided by unanimous consent or by majority vote at the time the committee is appointed.
So, what I'm hearing is, is actually not prescribed in our bylaws. And because it's not prescribed in our bylaws, then by majority vote, the board can decide based off of what you said, Mr. Sheldon, and based off what Mr. Murray just said.
Well, I tell you what, Mr. Burrows, you know that old phrase, "In the garden with the wind, frankly, my dear." And I don't mean to say that, and I wouldn't say that, but you know, all I can do is give you my opinion and give you my recommendation. You guys are free to do whatever you want to do. I'm not gonna argue, I don't have a dog in this fight. I think you're wrong in your interpretation. I think Mr. Murray is wrong in his interpretation. Could I be wrong? Sure, I could be wrong. Sure, I could be. But I've got like forty years of studying rules of parliamentary procedure and forty years of studying the law and two law degrees that hopefully give me some support. But I could still be wrong. I can learn something from everybody in this room, I've always accepted that. I'm just telling you, this is what I believe to be.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, are you ready to take the floor?
I went back to the handbook, and it says duties of board officers. Officers of the Board of Education are chair, vice chair, and by law, the superintendent of schools as the executive officer, secretary, and treasurer. The chair presides at all meetings, signs authorized or approved contracts and other documents on behalf of the board, represents the views of the board in all communications and correspondence, and performs other duties prescribed by law or by the board. The chair may appoint ad hoc committees of the board and/or staff members to assist the board with its work, study, specific issues, or undertake board projects. In the absence of the chair, the vice chair performs these duties.
Point of clarification there.
And the references are Educational Article, Section three, one, zero, zero, four, Board Policies ninety-one hundred, that, that's what it was, ninety-one hundred. Officers ninety-two ten, Chair ninety-two twenty. And that's what I'm gonna go to, ninety-two twenty. So, it is in our policy, and I'll go to that exact policy. This was the, from the handbook, so.
Point of clarification, Madam Chair, the, the, the board handbook is based on policy. The board handbook itself is not a policy. So, it's just.
I didn't say it was. I was read, I just read the policies from which that, that statement was derived. I didn't say this was the policy book. I said, this is what came from the policy.
And, and Madam Chair, if I may, if you go on page one of the handbook, it makes very clear that the purpose of the handbook is to provide guidance for members of the Board of Education, PGCPS staff, students, and community at large regarding the manner by which the board typically operates and carries out its authority allocated to the board by law. The handbook is not intended to mandate any process that is binding upon the board unless the process is otherwise required by law. The handbook was last updated in two thousand and ten. It has not been revised since then. However, our board policies have been updated since then. And so, the document that you're reading is not up to date with current board policies. Current board policy can be found on the PGCPS website.
That's where I am, sir. And I just pulled up the handbook so that I could get the policy numbers. I'm not going to debate this with you all, because it's getting late. And I, I think this is a game that's being played by board members. It's unfortunate that we are pontificating on something, on minutia, as I see it right now. And I'm just, I'm just, I will, I will seek legal counsel from the, the general counsel for the County Executive's Office. Until such time, we can get legal counsel on this board to give us direction. Board Member Valentine, your hand is up.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
And I think we've, we've all iterated that it's, it's getting late for all of us. And I don't, I'd just be honest with you. I don't think we're at our best individually or collectively at this, at this point. And we're making decisions that impact our students, our budget, our system, our reputation. And I just think it's just, we're just not in a good place. Let me say this. What we've been going through for the past, I'm not sure how long, is, is the first step in a series of steps that will hopefully end us, end up with a lawyer who will represent us and advise us. That's correct. And so, the process in which we're going through now, to those who are watching, could seem as if one side or the other is trying to predict that outcome with the hopes that there's a level of hopefully impartiality to whoever that person or body is advising us. I've been on this board for eight years, only one person on this board who's been on here longer than I have. I have been represented by, by, you know, as a board member, by, I believe, three, maybe even four different attorneys over the last eight years. I can say that each of those attorneys did not operate with bias towards one person or another because as an attorney, they have a body above them that requires them to act based on the law and the interpretation of it. And so, again, for those who are watching, there is an impression that there are folks who are trying to direct who that person is, seemingly with the impression that that person is going to maybe interpret what they see as right versus someone else sees as, sees as wrong. And that is, in its core, at its foundation, souring anything that that particular body, lawyer, firm, would do. And this is to, to, to our parliamentarian's point, why, why, why anyone with any reputation or, or any, you know, ethics would want to work with a body that even on live television is trying to predict that outcome. I've been on the board for eight years, the chairperson, and I think this is my third chairperson, has, has done so. And we've, we're, we're, we are, you know, to a point where we are, you know, litigating and debating things that years ago, we're, we're, you just sort of, we're, we're, seemed to be things that we did through consensus, and it seems to be more personal. And it's unfortunate, again, because, again, people are watching, we're not doing this in private. We're doing so with people who potentially would apply for this job, I, I assume would not have. But just keep in mind, again, right now, we're just not at our best. And I think that trying to predict a certain outcome by, by, by deciding who's going to pick the ad hoc committee because this ad hoc committee's going to interpret this or that and oppose, you know, propose this lawyer, not this lawyer. Bodies just don't work that way. And lawyers who are gonna support aren't gonna work that way. And so, I don't know if there's a motion to, I know there's a motion on the floor, but I would, I would motion to adjourn and reconvene because I think we're just not at our best, and to make a decision like this at this point in time would do us all a disservice.
I would second that motion.
Point of order, there's a motion on the floor.
Well, he's adding, and he's asking to amend that motion or
Or table it.
Table it.
Mr. Parliamentarian, does, does a motion to adjourn supersede any of these motions, just, just for clarification?
I'm sorry, Ms. Valentine, I didn't even realize there was still a motion on the floor, to tell you the truth. Again, as Parliamentarian, I'm expecting the secretary to keep track of whether or not a motion is.
There's also.
Yes, there's a motion on the floor.
I, I, I understand, my, my colleague, Mr. Burrows, has, has a motion, I believe, my colleague submitted, seconded it. But, but my point is, is there, does, does the, the motion to adjourn supersede that, yes or no, sir?
Yes, sir. The motion to adjourn is superior to that. The chair gave you the floor, accepted the motion, the motion to adjourn should send us home. Anything else is gonna be an unfinished business the next time we come around.
Okay, it, it was moved and seconded by my colleague, Ms. Queen.
Yeah, I said, your motion is in order. Your motion to adjourn is in order.
Look, I just want to clarify for board staff that it was moved and seconded, sir.
There's a motion on the floor.
There was some conversation, I didn't hear who seconded it, I'm sorry, Dr. Miller, I did not.
Ms. Queen, Board Member Queen.
Thank you very much. Excuse me, Madam Chair.
No, no problem. It has been moved and seconded to table the current conversation about the, or discussion relative to legal counsel and to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
No question.
I had a question.
Hi.
There's a discussion, I believe, Ms.
I had my glasses, I need it. Board Member Thomas. Board Member Thomas.
Just for clarity, the motion that was already on the table is just going to be ignored. I don't think Mr. Burrows withdraw it. I don't think I heard him accept any friendly amendments, so.
But what I was, what I was saying is, the motion to adjourn takes precedent over anything else that's pending. If the motion to adjourn carries, you don't need to make a motion to table, a motion to do any of that. That stuff, it comes up the next time on the unfinished business. You just didn't get to finish it, it's just that simple. You make it more complicated by trying to do an emotion to reconsider, a motion to withdraw, and all that. The chair accepted a motion to adjourn, that's what we're gonna vote on now, yes or no?
Okay, all right.
And if we adjourn, we going home.
Our Board Member Stafford.
Yes, I'm just trying to ask for clarification. Dr. Miller, did you say that you were going to get legal counsel from the, the county to come help us with this?
I didn't say, no, I did not say that. I did not say I was going to have anybody come to this board. I, as the chairperson, am going to seek legal counseling in terms of what is going on, on this board and the opposition that this board is being placed in by not following procurement procedures relative to what we have been discussing all evening. And I will get an opinion, if they're allowed to give an opinion, because they're not serving as our legal counsel. But it would be an opinion from a legal, a legal source. We could either take it or leave it, but I'm for the sanctity and integrity of this board. You, we need to hear out, from outside, a legal opinion in terms of what we're doing. Because we've been told by a, a former procurement specialist, we've been told by the CEO what this could lead to. And it appears that we are dragging this system down by not adhering to certain procedures, policies, and procedures, especially related to procurement. So, you know, we keep vote, you know, making motions to do this and, and we don't bring closure. We haven't brought closure to one entity, and we're ready, you know, we're making motions to move on to something else. And we're setting, it appears, we're setting ourselves up for some kind of litigation. So, with that being said, there's a motion on the floor to adjourn. I see Board Member Shail, did you just finish saying something? Board Member Queen, your hand is last hand.
Thank you so very much. So, I just wanted a little clarification on something similar to what Board Member Adam Stafford just asked. But I think you mentioned, you did mention that you was gonna go seek legal counsel. But I was assuming that the legal counsel was on that ninety-one hundred or the ninety-one twenty question, but you just stated it's on something else, so I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Dr. Miller, can I also, and I, I will definitely the, the support of my, my secondor, Board Member Queen, that my, my motion would also include we would confirm actions taken in executive session today and the, the specific actions that were taken in last session that Mr. Burrows outlined previously that he may want to repeat. But they would ensure that we would at least make sure that the action that we were taking in executive session both today and the specific ones in the last session were approved.
I can read them, because we were very specific in what we wanted to approve. So, are you rescinding your adjourn?
Not rescinding, amending, but I'm, I'm the maker of the motion, but also my secondor has to approve as well.
Perfect, please.
Yeah, I mean, she's gonna go ahead and read it, yes. Bones, mushy.
This is the six point O, motion to confirm actions taken in executive session. Motion and second to confirm actions taken in executive session on September second as follows. Receive an internal audit report. Board Legal Counsel Committee meeting review. Discussion and approval of personnel appointments. Resolution of the matters regarding CEO evaluation, personnel matters, former employees, and confirmation of board actions. Is that correct?
Yes, in addition to the actions we took today, in today's.
That, I said that, where was it?
So, and so that, that's my amendment, Board Member Queen, do you agree?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so I'd like to call for a question.
And, and just, just to clarify, it's the personnel appointments, the CEO and the year evaluation, legal matters regarding former employee personnel matters.
And today's board action.
And today's board actions.
That's what I said.
I, I can call for the question, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition?
No.
Any abstentions? The motion carries to confirm actions taken in executive session today.
Can we call the roll, please? I mean, I'm pretty sure we heard some no's, some ayes.
One, no.
I didn't hear any no's.
You were ten, one. Roll call, roll call.
Roll call. Motion to confirm actions taken in executive session. Ms. Berkeley, please call a roll.
For, for clarification, it was a twofold motion, he said.
To adjourn and, right.
Okay. Mr. Adam Stafford?
Yes.
Mrs. Emmett?
No.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Yes.
Mr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mr. Seron Ruiz?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. McKens Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Montero?
Mr. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Same.
Mrs. Queen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Eleven ayes, two nays, one abstention.
Good night, everybody. Have a good weekend. Happy Friday.
Bye, everybody.
Is that for good, Mr. Shelton?
Yes, Dr. Miller, it is. I'm afraid so. I, I will not come back. I just can't do it.
Well, we appreciate, your services were greatly appreciated and I hope maybe you have second thoughts. Um.
Uh, I'll talk to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sheldon. Thank you, Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley.